Good evening, we will call the meeting to order, Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals. So only Board of Appeals meeting for February 10th, 2021. We'll start with a roll call of attendees. Chip Tarbell?
Yes, here.
And McBane?
Here.
And you all?
Yeah.
Joe Pride?
Here.
I'm Lucy.
President.
Mike Feely?
Here.
Greg McIntosh?
Here.
Okay, all members in attendance, we'll proceed now to the legal notice. Please go ahead, Emmy.
Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or a microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number, 1301-715-8592, meeting ID 846-6678-5990, passcode 048949. Please, please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. One, continued hearings. Two, 21-36 Charles Realty LLC, Charles J. Doherty, manager. Application for modification of eight decisions all dated June 12th, 2017 as modified by decision dated June 11th, 2019 to modify the approved plans to construct an eight unit multifamily dwelling. The property is shown as map 14C lot parcels 158-27B and a portion of 27C. At sequence, is that what that means? Of the assessors map is located at 404 Lowell Street. 321-37 Crescent Commons Development LLC, application for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40. To raise existing structures and build them up, dwelling with six rental units. This property is shown as map 17 lot parcels 171, 172, and 173 of the assessors map. It is located at 44, 46, and 48 Crescent Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Emmy.
You're welcome.
Okay. So as I usually do, I'll start with a couple reminders again, in case there are folks who have not attended some of these remote meetings using Zoom. It is being recorded as noted, will be available for replay on a town's website. Within a few business days after posting. We've muted all people on entry, but everyone should have the ability to unmute themselves when it's the appropriate time to do so, as well as share screen, which will ask all applicants to be prepared to share plans that they plan to present tonight. They should have the ability to share their screens. We have disabled the chat feature because we want all discussion to take place in the meeting room. We ask everyone, if possible, to share their video and audio in the meeting room as we would during a regular public hearings. We could see your smiling faces unless there's technical limitations or some reason why she choose not to. But we certainly would request and encourage it. Any votes that we take tonight will be via roll call, as I did during the attendance part, given the remote participation. And I would ask again that everyone, all members of the public, please remain on mute during the duration of each application. And when it's appropriate, I will open it up to public testimony and you can raise your hand by clicking the icon in the Zoom meeting room or waving if you're not quite sure how to do that. And I will try to call in folks in the order in which I recognize them. And we will ask you to state your name and address for the record, and then you may ask a question or pose a comment. So with that, we will begin with continue, oh, I will first take up one matter in case anyone's here for that. Because we, one of our continued hearings was for an application that we have received a request to continue. So in case anyone's here for that. So from attorney Brian McGrail. Regarding 168 Lexington Street LLC, 525 and 527 Salem Street, case numbers 21-22, 23, and 24, requesting that we continue this matter until a meeting on February 24th, 2021. And that they're still in the process of working on revisions to the plans requested by the board. So I would welcome a motion.
Move to continue the hearing until the meeting on February 24th.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, regular voting members, Jim?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So if anyone is here specifically for that application, it will be heard at our next hearing on February 24th. So that brings us to our next continued hearing. Case 21, 12, 13, and 14, 610 Salem Street, Wakefield LLC at 610 Salem Street. Welcome back, Brian and team.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the public, for the directed attorney Brian McGrail, representing the applicant 610 Salem Street, Wakefield LLC, regarding the property at 610 Salem Street. This is a continued hearing regarding that property for a 30 unit mid-rise apartment building. There has been an ongoing hearing process before the board. With me tonight is Paul Cagiano, Paul, Iowa number. He is the principal of 610 Salem Street, Wakefield LLC. Also here tonight is John Ogron from Hayes Engineering, our site civil engineer, and Peter Sandor, who is our architect. After the last meeting, the board had, the last hearing that took place in this, the board had given us, I think, some assignments, final assignments on this project to put some items together and to work with board member McBane on what I would deem to be some final revisions to the architectural plan. And I know our architect, Peter Sandor, has been working with Mr. McBane in that regard. We submitted a bunch of materials to the board last week. And I'd like to go through those, if I may, Mr. Chair, to show the revisions that have been made pursuant to the requests of the board.
Please.
Great. So if I can, I guess, share the screen. Let me figure out how to do this.
Detached them all from your mailbox already, right?
I tried.
As much as we enjoy looking at your inbox.
My inbox, yeah. Okay. Not bad. Okay. So you can see that, I think it's probably a little bit too big. So this is the revised plan, John Ogron is here. I think I can highlight it, and then if John has anything to add, there's some pretty, pretty simple changes that took place to this. There was a memo, the first changes that we did, there was a memo from the Board of Department of Public Works Engineering Department, where they have required some items as conditions. John and I had an opportunity to do a detailed phone conference with Bill Renaud, the town engineer. We went through the letter. John has addressed all of the issues on the plan, like the board wishes to happen. So there's not tons of conditions that can be put on the plan. So all of the technical changes have been put within the plan pursuant to Bill's request. And we confirmed with Bill that he was fine with that. And then Bill had some final notes that he, final conditions that he wanted. And we put those as notes on the plan again, that's how the board likes it, because everybody, including the engineering departments, are looking at the plans more than the decision. And those in the bottom left-hand corner, where he wants us to be responsible for the environmental monitor on the project, which John and I spoke with him about, which is pretty standard. He just wants, the second thing is, he wants test hole information that was done by Hayes Engineering to be field verified, which is fine with us, again, standard. And then he also wants as-built drawings when the project is completed. And that's been a requirement that the board usually requires too. So those are all taken care of now as DPW notes on the plan. The other small change, John just aligned the parking a little bit. He moved this back about three feet just to align it, actually gave us a little bit more of a buffer from the frontage. So, so that, that's really, I think, there might have been a couple of technical changes you made for, for Bill. John, is there anything else you want to add besides what I just referenced?
Yeah, I mean, most, most of the changes were dealt with details and utility connections. Nothing really on the surface. The only thing we should probably point out is that a hydrant was added at the request of the DPW and the fire department out in the front of the building.
And what's the date on the revised site plans?
February 5th. Yep, DPW comments 25, 2021. John, you also added a handicap warning panel?
We did add a handicap ramp out in, out in Salem Street, correct?
So, so that, that's, that's it on the site plan. I'm happy to keep this up if any board members have any questions on this, Mr. Chair. And then if not, I can just move to the next.
So there's, the town is not asking for this project to put a handicap access on the opposite curb?
Well, it's kind of a strange situation. There's two handicap ramps that exist out in basically the driveway to the the property that's behind this, this property. However, those handicap ramps actually aren't out on the layout of Salem Street. They're actually on private property. So the town engineer wanted us to add a handicap ramp on our, in front of our property that was out in Salem Street.
But, but he's, but they're not asking for one on the opposite curb.
Down here, Jim, you're talking about?
No, no, no.
Over here, over here.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I mean, normally, normally they would, they wouldn't do one, they'd do two, basically to continue, you know, the access along Salem Street. I find it strange that they're not asking for one on either side. I mean, you're just not going to let someone roll off into the street, not be able to get back up.
It's, all that they requested was that we add the handicap ramp out in front of our property.
Then, then I think this board ought to ask that a bit ramp be put on the opposite curb as well.
I agree with that. It doesn't make any sense.
I gotta say, I agree with it too. I mean, it, you know, I don't think there's any, I mean, I think the only, the only argument would be, well, that's not our property. But, you know, a big part of this project and the people that live here is they're going to utilize the sidewalk. So Paul, is Paul, can you hear? Paul Cagiano? I think you're muted, Paul. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna save time. I'm gonna speak for Paul. We don't have any issue with that. It makes sense. Makes sense for the project and it makes sense for the neighborhood. So, you know, as long as we get the, as long as we have the ability to do that improvement, if we're allowed to do it by the town, then, you know, we will do that. I don't think there'd be a problem with that. You know, we'll want to.
It's where, can you just circle on the plan again, where you're talking, Brian?
Right over here.
Right on that side. Okay.
Right, Jim?
What's that?
That's what you're talking about, right in the, right in here, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Brian, this is David. I'm partners with Paul. I'm, I don't see an issue with that.
Well, thank you, Dave. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Very much. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one question. This is Tom Lucy.
Yes.
We have talked about the trees on that street leading up. Are they public trees or do those trees belong to the property owner further up the street? And should we be doing anything to save those trees or at least put in tree protection to do our best to save them?
I can address that, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Brian.
Yeah, they are, they are on private property, Mr. Lucy. And we, when I show the conditions, we've put a condition in relating to that, very simple to the project across the street that had trees on a neighboring property to make sure that they're protected. So we can get to that. That's okay.
Okay. Any other questions on this plan and the updates?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Feely, it's private property, is it town property or is it neighbor property? Do you need Neesman? How's that get done?
What this is, Mike, is these trees are planted.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was going back to the, the handicap.
Oh, I think that that handicap ramp, Mike, that's, Mike is going to be town property. I think that's a town sidewalk. John, is that, can you confirm that, John?
Yeah, and as I said, there, there's two handicap ramps on either side of that driveway entrance that exists today. However, those handicap ramps are on private property. So not to take a look at it, but, you know, we could add an additional handicap ramp on that rounding within and make it so that it was within the right of way of Salem Street.
Yeah, and the way Bill Renaud explained it to us, because we said, gee, there's already ramps out here, it doesn't make sense. And he said, well, when the town does, you know, in essence, this is going to be an improvement in the right of way. And when the town does that, they have to meet the, the town has to meet the ADA requirements. And the town can't say, oh, well, gee, we have handicap ramps on private property. You know, the state is going to want to make sure that those ramps are on public property that the public has, has access to.
Will they ask you for like some sort of allowance? I mean, who pays for that?
Oh, we'll, we'll do the work. That will be a condition that we're going to do the work.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll get a permit from DPW, Mike, to do that work.
Okay.
It's part of the project.
Thanks.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, Brian, next.
Well, and one other thing I want to point out, I don't know if these were on the prior plan. Did you have the bollards for the, for the transformer on the prior plan? Was, were these new?
I believe they're on the previous plan.
Okay, that's fine. But you, I just wanted to point those out because that was discussed. And I'm going to bring up the landscaping plan now to just keep these in mind. Okay, we're gonna stop sharing that. Is my email again? All right. Okay. So I had James, James Emanuel's on vacation. Fortunately, I was able to get him today. He's revised the landscaping plan. Just to refresh the board's memory, there were some things that you wanted on this. And he has revised it. What he did is he, he redid the landscaping to account for the three feet that John shifted it back. So now we're consistent with the site plan and the, in the landscaping plan. He also, pursuant to your request, took a look at the transformer and reviewed the light department requirements on that. And he's, he's put some landscaping around that as you were requested. You would also requested, I think, a blow up of that area for the transformer. So that's up in the left-hand corner of this plan to give the board a, a good look at it. It references the bollards. He also has put balled lights within the parking area. You can see one here. The board had talked about that. You can see them placed in here to just give some accent lighting to the parking area for the landscaping. So that has been done on the plan. And the other thing that, that Mr. Tarbell had requested is that the tree size is being increased. So what we did is the Century Ginkgo, it was two and a half to three, it's now three to three and a half is one of those. And then there's two Sunset Maples. Those were two and a half to three, now they're three to three and a half caliber. So I think we've done everything that the board requested as far as the landscape modifications are concerned.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, board members?
No.
Chip? All right. Chip, you're good? Just want to make sure. Because I think some of those comments were yours. You're unmuted, Chip, if you're trying to speak. Okay. Okay. Go. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this now takes us to the architectural plan and revisions that were worked on by Peter and Jim. So Peter, are you there, Pete?
I am, I'm here.
Want to take it from here on this, and I can kind of go through this where you need it.
Sure, Jim and I met, I believe, at least twice and talked about bringing these plans up to date in terms of the, the details so that we locked in, for instance, the, the projection of the bays at the trim at the bays, the, the railings, the scuppers, the height of the parapets, both the low parapet and the high parapet. There's down, further down in the packet, we show detail sheets that tie that in dimensionally. What we did here in this rendering is you can see how the, the parapet step in. So the rendering was updated a bit, cuppers are now located. We, go, go ahead, Brian, you can shift to the next slide. We, where it was appropriate, we amended the renderings again at this slide as well. Think on this one, it showed not so much. So keep going, Brian. That was just showing how the trees created a screen. Here, here in the rendered elevations, you can see the upper parapet stepping. And Jim and I worked on adjusting, even this rendering isn't quite true to form, but adjusting the height of that to, from three feet to two feet. So we actually brought the building down another foot, which the CAD will show, Brian, as you scroll forward. These are all better than they were, a little more accurate, but again, still rendering. Go ahead, Brian. Here, here we're getting to the detail sheets where we reviewed, and we went through this before, about what the brick is, what the hardy plank is, what the color is, the color of the bays, the actual color from, from the paint company, the standing seam metal roof, and siding, what that is, the screening in the, in the garage, what that will be made out of. We, we researched, and Brian's going to talk about it a bit, but the lighting in the garage being motion sensitive. And we are going to do that. Was discussed at the last meeting, still using LED fixtures in the ceiling. But that'll be motion activated as you move through the garage with some lighting that will exist a very minor amount all the time in, in the evening, in the night, and then all the lights will go off during the day, photo sensitive. If you shift in the next sheet, Brian. This plan was, was where we were showing the water meter room that we just discussed last time as well. So that's existing on the, on the middle right section of the garage. Yep, exactly. Go ahead, Brian, to the next. So here, here, there's really no changes in the plan. That was what was presented before. So all of these sheets will, will be the same as they were. So you can continue running down through, this is presenting all the different floor plans of the, of the building and the unit counts. When you get to the next sheet, we start to get into the, that's the roof plan. I'm showing the condensers, the access, the elevator. This was brought up before, but it also shows the inset of that upper parapet that we, that we did on the upper level to, to break it visually from the fourth floor of the, of the building. Go ahead, Brian. So here in the, in the CAD, you can see that the parapet on the upper level is, is two feet. Then the fourth floor is eight feet. The, the other floor is being reduced to nine, and then the parking garage below, which gets the building to 43 feet from the grade to the top of the parapet. That, those changes kind of carry through to all four elevations of the building, which is what we did. Go ahead, Brian. This is where we really spent some time with Jim going, here's the dimensional changes you can, or what they actually are, how far the bay projects, what, how, how this parapet is created at the lower level, how the parapet is created and the heights and the inset at the upper level. Off to the right, we show the depth of the, of the decks, the, the, the rut, the railing, the metal railing called out, the sleepers, detailing again dimensionally what all this is so that it locks it in. It's, it's not, it's not just a rendering or a picture. We're trying to really tie it down so it gets built the way we want it to be built. If you go to the next sheet, then we went ahead and did blow ups of those so that we look at the parapet band detail at the lower part of the building and the parapet band detail at the upper part of the building zoning in, the window trim around the windows, the winds, the trim that exists in the metal frame that's in the parking garage, the deck wall detail, how that's being done with a metal cap and then a parapet, and then a wall and the scupper. And then down here in the bottom, the limestone cap detail, how it offsets, how the building meets it, how the opening happens into the masonry wall of the garage below. These last few sheets are where we really spent our time tying in the details with the actual building creation. What's the next sheet, Brian?
That's it, Peter.
That's it. So that's, that's what we worked on. And, and I think the intent was to push forward a little bit just to get it almost to the level of the beginning of the construction. So that it's not just saying, oh, that was a rendering, and this is how it really is. This is trying to say, this is what we're building, or this is how we're detailing the building.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Any questions, board members?
So what Peter's got here is, is in fact what we discussed to, as he says, lock it in so that we have this information going forward, that the board approved this sort of detailed information. It's particularly dimensionally appropriate basically for this. I didn't want to have the parapet too high. I think the last one was three foot. And even though you might see the elevator override a little bit, the two foot, I think, does, does adequate coverage. And at the same time, it, it doesn't have a solid wall because it breaks itself back. So shadow wise, basically, it will be a little, a less, a little more harmonious and less a, a hard wall basically on that top floor. So I make recommendation that this is, is good at this point, and so I'm satisfied with the detail that's been provided basically for this application.
Okay, thank you, Jim, and thanks for your work on that with Peter. Any, any other board members? Okay. What's next, Brian?
So next would be the O and M plan, which I already submitted. I made, after talking to Peter on the garages, I made a couple of revisions to that, and I'd just like to bring that up.
Yeah.
Hold on. Okay. Can the board see that?
Not yet.
No? Okay.
We can, if you want to just make it a little, little bigger.
Yep. So I've already, I've already submitted this to the board. It's quite detailed on basically the O and M plan for the property itself. And so the board has seen this. I'm happy to stop, but it's very detailed. The only thing I added was garage lighting. I contemplated putting that as a condition. I just thought it might be better in the O and M plan because of details. And then when you go down to the requirement on the garage lighting, I kind of did it rough because I figured the board might want to discuss this. But I, I put in from blank PM until sunrise, only necessary safety lighting shall be continually lit in the garage. And the general lighting shall only turn on via motion detectors. That was very rough, and I think it probably accomplishes, but obviously the board will determine what the appropriate condition is. But I just kind of wanted to give a little template for discussion.
The, the only thing I would say is that we don't know. The the only thing I would say is that we don't know, given the screening that's going to be put in there basically for ventilation. And and I think I brought this up sometime back about, you know, having lighting in a in a lit garage basically being as you drive by. But given the the nature of the screening and the like, I think that I'd like to leave this a little open in this sense, is near the end of construction, when this is available to see, basically, we may want to twink this a little bit as far as when it comes on, all right? Because it may be darker in that garage earlier than one might think based on light outside is all. So timing, timing may may vary for some areas or not.
I mean, that's fine with us. I think if that's the case, we would put it back to a condition rather than than the O and M. And it would say that the board reserves the right to review the lighting in the garage when the building is complete and to then restrict the lighting hours of operation with motion detectors in the garage at the board's discretion.
As much as I respect Mr. McBane's authority and knowledge, that's useless. That's just nonsense. The lights are occupancy censored and determined by the darkness or lightness in the garage. So there there doesn't need to be a time on it at all.
I was wondering that.
That they will just be done from a sensor. And then it doesn't matter what time of year it is or whatever, when it's dark in the garage and the lights come on.
Well, I guess you and I will talk about this in twelve months or so, huh?
It doesn't, it just doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm just not sure we.
You're talking about minutia.
Yeah, I don't I don't recall us getting into this much detail with some of the other developments in with garages. I just.
We actually don't have it in any other, the other ones. This came up because the neighbors were concerned about the lighting in the garage.
Right, so I'm I'm fine saying, you know, safety lighting only and the rest is motion detected and that motion would would occur when it's dark regardless of when that is.
Anytime of day.
It isn't, and it is, it isn't a spotlight, it's appropriate for the the area.
But start the lights come on.
Yeah. And this could, language like this could kind of do it. Safety lighting should be continually lit in the garage and the general lighting should only turn on via motion detectors.
Just so there's no question, do you want to say do any required by code? So there's no question on who determines what safety lighting is.
I think that's a good point, yeah.
I'd rather, I'd rather have it like this in in the O and M than a condition. So I'm I'm fine the way it is.
I'll say the general lighting in the garage, just to be specific. Okay. And then the only other thing I did on the O and M was, we had some, John and I discussed this. We had had some language in here on the drainage infrastructure, but there's an O and M plan that's part of the drainage study that's a requirement of the conservation commission. So we've just tied that in and say that the long-term operation made this plan requirements and conditions contained in it are prepared by engineering attached yet to his appendix. A a shall be complied with at all times. So now it's 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 totally in sync with the conservation commission and and that appendix is very detailed, which we submitted.
Okay, any questions or comments board members? Okay, thanks Brian, what's next?
Okay. Let's see. We have a construction schedule. We submitted.
So estimating around fifteen months, give or take.
I'm sorry, I can't read that. What's the beginning date?
Sorry Mike.
What's the proposed beginning date?
It's May of two thousand twenty.
I don't know what I do with this.
No, no, I just. Bring my glasses next time.
Boy, I just ruined it, sorry about that. Is everyone done with that? Should I reopen it where it's? You good with that?
Yeah, I thought it said March of this year potentially again to when things line up, but it's not going to start to end and seem to cover the bases. But yeah, about fifteen months, give or take. Okay.
And then the only other thing that I had on the list that we submitted was some draft conditions which we submitted. I made a couple of revisions after reviewing them that I anticipated the board from prior experience would require. So I want to briefly go through these, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Okay, so these, these are the conditions. So basically it requires the applicant to comply with respects to the conditions of the decision.
We don't see them yet, one second Brian, sorry.
All right.
It looked like it's still open, still opening on, okay, in the screen.
There yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Let me try to do it again.
There we go.
Okay, great. So the first is the applicant shall comply in all material respects with the conditions of the decision. Board retains jurisdiction or prove any minor amendments to decisions or not material alter the terms of decision. If the board's judgment proposed changes material, then a new hearing shall be required to amend the decision. Jurisdictions to decide in disputes, make it clarifications, which cannot be resolved by the zoning enforcement officer, so shall be retained by the board. Applicants should provide zoning enforcement, office, a police department, fire department, DPW, list of contact persons, respective entities whom enforcement issues may be addressed.
Ryan, where this is where you're going to number three. Number one, should we take out material? Two, you should comply in all respects. And then if there's any changes, it's come back to us to determine whether it's a.
Yeah.
Minor modification.
I got it, great.
This is where you're going to number three too.
Yes, it is. Let me just do that while we do this. Okay, I took that out. All right, so I'd like to say these as I go along. In three, the appearance of the project shall be, and the board always says, no, we don't want it substantially. We want it as shown on the final site plan, final architectural plan and final landscape plan. For product applying for a building permit, the applicant shall submit a complete set of building plans to the board for review and confirmation of compliance with this decision. Plans submitted to the board should be the same plans and details submitted to the building inspector for the issuance of a building permit. Purpose of this submittals for the board to confirm that the building permit plans are, let's get rid of that again, substantially gone. The same as the final site plan, final architectural plan and final landscaping plan. Five, the applicant should provide a mock-up panel at the site displaying sample materials, including exterior finishes, window frames, colors, stone and grout for review and confirmation by the board. The materials are consistent with the final site plan, final architectural plan and final landscaping plan. The mock-up panel should be completed by the time the foundation is backfilled and before any of the items required to be on the mock-up panel are put on the building. Six, the applicant shall comply with all aspects and contents of the operation and maintenance plan. Seven, in the event of a conflict exist between this decision and the final site plan, final architectural plan and final landscaping plan, the plan shall control.
Ryan.
Plans, yes.
Well, back to mock-up panel.
Yep.
I'd like to see, like to have the board have a diagram of the mock-up panel ahead of time to make sure that the details that we want to see, not just the material, but the detail of some particular area. So if we could have a drawing basically of the mock-up panel to confirm what we're looking to have shown.
Drawing of the proposed mock-up panel before it's constructed.
Yeah, to be confirmed by the, to be, to be approved by the board before starting. Or or the designate for the board or whoever.
Great. Got it.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, number.
Yeah.
Sorry, did you already see it? No, I just wanted to make one point because this is appears to the project just, okay. I think where this changed recently and we just put those notes from the from the town engineer on the plans. You know, I think it's implied that the notes would be complied with, but you know, I could just put a thing here that all notes on the plan plans will be complied with. Okay, do I have a typo, Mr. Chair, on the next one somewhere?
Yeah, the previous sentence says the plans and shall control.
Ah, okay.
Need the word and the previous sentence. And and a number five with the sentence you just added, the applicant how provide, shall provide.
Yeah.
Okay, then I think we're good and let's keep going.
Okay. Number eight, I've changed this to say that we have provided a construction schedule and the applicant should comply with the terms there and which may be adjusted by the board as minor modification. Okay. Nine, the landscaping shall be installed prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy unless the weather does not allow for that to occur in the event the building is completed during the time of year, the landscape cannot be installed because of weather conditions and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the board may require the posting of surety by the applicant with the board in the month to be determined by the board at the board's sole discretion to assure that the landscaping will be completed when the weather allows.
Yep.
During construction.
Ryan, sorry, I was on view, back, back to number eight again. You put the applicant shall comply with the terms stated therein, which may be adjusted by the board as a minor modification.
Yes.
You should probably just stop with the applicant shall comply with the terms stated therein. We'll adjust it whether minor modification if we, if it's.
Got it.
We deem to do so.
Okay. Done.
Thanks Greg, yeah, good point.
Okay. And during construction onsite parking will be restricted to specific personnel and designated areas onsite and will be relocated or eliminated at the sole discretion direction of this project superintendent. No other onsite parking is allowed during construction. Parking is not allowed on any of the surrounding neighborhood streets. Violators will be told at the owners, owners and contractors to spend well notice. Pretty standard condition if the board puts on for projects. I think there's going to be plenty of room on this site. A lot of times that's applicable to tighter sites.
You don't have to read all of eleven, just point.
Yeah, eleven is just. Yeah, yeah. And the affordable requirement.
So one, one three bedroom.
Three twenty-two, two twenty-three.
One, three bedroom, twenty-three, two bedroom. And six, one bedroom. And then three. Three of the two bedroom units will be affordable and two of the one bedroom units will be affordable.
And those are the five, okay.
That's, and that meets the eighteen percent requirement, no waiver for that.
Right. The rest is kind of boilerplate.
Yeah.
Twelve, same rate, yeah.
It, this gives Wakefield residents a priority as far as the lottery goes for those affordable units. Twelve is the regulatory agreement that will be required. Thirteen deals with the fact that there has to be a percentage of affordables that are completed in ratio to the market rate. So at the end of the day, all the affordables are built.
Yep.
Fourteen states signage for the project has not been approved by the board. The board retains jurisdiction to prove any signage prior to installation.
Do we envision signage?
We don't, but just in case and we, you know, we might come back to the board if if everybody deems inappropriate and that will be our decision.
Okay, but you're not planning monument signs, no address signs, no.
Well, I think there's a number on the building.
Yeah.
You know, that that shows on the site plan.
Yeah.
Okay, we reserve the right to come back. It would be a, you know, something that the board would have to approve, but we don't have anything designed at this point. And then fifteen, prior to commencement of construction, this deals with the trees, Tom. The applicant shall meet with a designated board member to review, approve and implement a tree protection plan to prevent construction from causing any damage to the existing trees on the adjacent property along the westerly side of the property. I've already talked to our landscape architect, Jim Emanuel. He will participate in that meeting. He's already had some ideas on on what he might suggest. And I know Jim McBane has some ideas too on keeping a foundation.
And then we discussed a little while ago about a handicap ramp. Were you going to put that in as a condition?
That could either go on the plan, John could add that or we could make it a condition, whatever the board's pleasure.
I put it on the plan, so it's obvious to anybody working on a project that belongs with the project.
But it is still at the discretion of the town, right? Because it is not their property, so that's why.
Well, that's.
Does it deserve to be both maybe, I don't know.
That's true, but I, you know, you know, beyond the town, I I believe if I was to pull up the access code, that it actually says you can't put a ramp on one side without doing it on the other. They don't want to send a handicap person out into an intersection without recourse to come and get through. So it might even be a building code issue basically.
Yeah, I think we could just, you know, I I would, we, you've done this on other projects to put a condition that that says that we will do that off-site work, that will be our responsibility just to memorialize it. And then again, just to say that it will be done when we get approval by whoever we need from the town to do it, just in case they can't allow us to do it for some reason. Okay, I will just make a note of that. Condition requiring off-site improvements. And you can review that, Mr. Chair, obviously, as you always do.
Okay, board members, hold up.
Are we requiring as built, is that what you were saying earlier? I didn't see a condition for that.
Yeah, it's on the plan Greg.
Oh, it is on the plan, sorry, I missed that one.
It was one of the notes that the town engineer wanted.
All right, I heard that, I just couldn't see it written on there.
Got you, you want me to bring it back up?
Nope, if everyone else is fine.
Okay. That's, that's, that was, that was the list that I had.
And I had one other item. Unless there's anything else, board members, the only other item I had on my list was reviewing the relief required. Because again, you applied, there were three separate applications. And we just wanted to go through and again with the changes that have taken place throughout the hearing.
I can do that.
Whether just to just for clarity, because obviously one is a special permit. But then there was one around dimensional relief and parking, so.
Yep.
Yep. So we just want to be clear again where we've landed relative to the applications.
Yep, can you give me a second?
Absolutely.
Great, okay. With me, I'll bring that up. Actually, I think I can do it this way. Okay, I think probably. So the first form of relief that is is requested is a is a special permit under one ninety thirty-two for the use of the thirty-unit mid-rise apartment building.
Yeah.
So that's a used special permit, that's one of the applications. The second is in related to one ninety thirty-two is an application pursuant to one ninety thirty-two point one for reductions or alterations of the dimensional requirements under one ninety thirty-two D. For reductions or alterations of the dimensional requirements under one ninety thirty-two D. In table two of the bylaw related to the project. And the only thing we're seeking there is to reduce the front side and rear setback requirements, required front side and rear setbacks. Is shown on the on the site plan, there's no other relief, there's no relief for height, density or anything. Just pretty simple and then other reductions or alterations that would be required under one ninety thirty-two deep table two. To allow the project to be constructed, we don't show any, but we always have that language in there just in case something de minimis is missed.
So those setbacks for a mid-rise is thirty or the height of the building.
Correct.
So in this case forty-three and change whatever you said in.
Correct.
Yeah. So the setbacks would have to be forty-three from the front and both sides. And it won't be.
Not supposed.
Do we know them?
They're right on the, if you have the site plan, I can bring it up if you want, because they're right, it's on the table.
Okay, that's fine.
That's why I reference it by showing on the plan.
Okay.
And that's it on that, and then on the special permit related to parking was this. Is a funky provision in the bylaw under one ninety thirty-seven E one, it talks about having to have a fifteen foot landscaping strip at the entrance, but it kind of conflicts with the entrance. So I always ask relief for that just because I don't know what it means, we have fifteen feet, we do have fifteen feet of landscaping, but it's kind of weird how that operates with the driveway. And then also a request to reduce the, to allow the parking spaces to be within seven and a half feet of the building. Under that same section of the bylaw, one ninety thirty-seven E one, it states that parking spaces need to be seven and a half feet from any building. In order to get as many parking spaces in there as we, as we, you know, are able to do, we'd want it to be able to be a little bit closer than the seven and a half feet. But there's no request to reduce the, you know, reduce the number of parking spaces if that's, there's excess parking under the bylaw. Because we stated that consistently throughout the hearing.
I'm just reading the provision, okay, E one, got it. Any questions on that, board members? I tell Paul, I think we get to the end of these after several hearings, just to review. Okay.
Reasonable.
All right, Brian. That was everything, anyone else, board members?
Nope.
Okay. Well, we've covered a lot of ground, all aspects of the project. Will open up to the public one last time, but before that, I just want to make it clear and ask once again, board members, the voting members I have on this potentially. As myself, Jim, Chip, Joe and Tom. Amy, you had missed a meeting and I don't, I don't. A record of you catching up on that one, so, but Tom and Joe were here for all hearings, so. Those would be the five voting members, so of those five voting members, anyone have any remaining questions, concerns? That would prevent you from proceeding to a vote at this time?
No. No.
Okay. So once again, I'll open it up and perhaps for the last time, the public testimony, if anyone has a comment or question, ask you to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. And I will call you and we'll ask you to just state your name and address for the record. Okay. And the first one I see, Brian Mandela Volpe.
Hi, how are you?
I thank you.
Um, Brahman Telavobi, eight Cyrus Street, and I do apologize, my camera is not working at this time. Um, I may have missed the meeting when you people discussed the lighting, particularly landscape and building, outdoor building lighting. Um, have you guys seen the actual fixtures that will be used?
Yes.
I think we have, Brian.
Jim, I'll let Jim answer that.
Yeah, so there's in the package that's before us right now, there are ballot lightings basically that are in some parking spaces. There's no, there's no washing of the building or anything like that. There are light fixtures, we've, we previously discussed how the light fixtures inside the parking area will be controlled.
Right.
And there's a copy of the light fixture that's in the package that's just been shown to us, which also is in the previous package.
Is that available to the public to see?
Uh, has been.
Okay, so, um, where would that packet be available? Online?
I assume.
It's not online, it's at the building department.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Record, yeah.
The reason I'm asking is, is because I'm going to assume that they're all dark skies compliant. Fixtures. Which is pretty standard these days.
Well, the only fixture that's outside is a ballot type, and I would say, given the, given the pro pie appearance of it, I would, I would think it meets that requirement. The inside ones basically are controlled basically by motion sensors and by timers.
Right.
And, and at the same time, the screening system that goes in the window system basically blocks a lot of light. When it's on, because you got to understand that they, as people move out of the area where the senses are, then they turn off automatically.
Right, right, excellent, thank you. Um, but how about exterior building lighting or lighting on the balconies?
Um. Think there's a cut of that in the package at this point.
Okay, because I just wanted to try to keep it on your radar that, you know. All of these developments should have dark skies compliant fixtures, which are. Pretty standard these days and can be found anywhere. Because we have an awful lot of light spill in this town and it's very intrusive to our neighborhoods. So that's the reason why I'm asking, now, on the, on the, on the conditions, what's the durability of the conditions? Do they last forever or do they have a deadline?
They last forever in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you, um. Okay, and, uh, let's see, you said there was one three-bedroom apartment, is that correct? Total?
Correct.
All right, twenty-three, two-bedroom?
Correct.
And six, one-bedroom?
Correct, I'm just gonna ask Peter, Peter, I got that right, right? Make sure we give the right information, one, three.
That is correct, yes.
Yes, Miss Delvo.
Of the one bedroom, two of them are affordable?
Correct.
Uh, how many of the two bedroom are affordable?
Three.
And the, the one, three bedroom is not?
That will be fair market.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, I just, you know, really would like to urge this board, because you go into such tremendous detail. That you really keep an eye on dark skies compliant fixtures and light spill. There's some that say they're dark skies compliant, but if they're not stamped and sealed, they're really not, so we really have to keep an eye on light spill and light trespass and, and light pollution, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just scrolling down the participant lists. Or looking for anyone waving. Not seeing any other hands, I'll give it one last look. Most people don't have their video on. Okay, seeing no other hands or waving, I will close it to public testimony. So back to the board, Brian, as you noted with the applications, there were three votes required. For each of those applications and the relief you had somewhere, is right?
Yes.
Is there a board member prepared to do so?
Dave, would you like me to?
That'd be great, Chip, thank you.
Let me just get organized for a second, I wasn't quite ready to do it. All right, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit and site plan approval pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-two of our bylaw. Allowing a thirty unit mid-rise apartment building. That will be condominium units at six ten Salem Street. As shown on the final site plan and final architectural plan, final site plan divided revised to five. Twenty twenty-one by Ogren Associates, and I'm not sure about the date on the architecturals.
Peter, can you help on that?
Phoenix, Arizona.
Yes, that it's tonight's date, two ten twenty-one.
Revised to ten twenty-one.
Yes.
For Phoenix.
Landscaping plans the same date.
And landscaping as. Uh, on two ten, two ten as well, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. And we find that the use requested is listed in the table of use. Requirements for a special permit in the district for which the application was made. We find that the uses requested use is essential. And desirable to the public convenience and welfare. And that there's a dire need for housing, including affordable housing in the town of Wakefield. So thus it meets that requirement. The requested use will not create and add undue traffic congestion and unduly. Impair pedestrian safety, actually, it increases pedestrian safety with the sidewalks. As we discussed tonight and we heard from traffic advisory that there's no undue traffic congestion being created. Uh, that the requested use will be, will not. Overload any of the public waters and we heard from any of the public utilities. And we heard from. Engineering that that was the case. The, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. And not be detrimental to public health governance and welfare. And the requested use will not. Be in addition to it, will not. Greatly add to the particular use to determine that the character of the neighborhood. And that it will put a. Vacated or blight property to a beneficial use. And then. We also. Uh, reviewed the section of the bylaw which. States. That reviewing a site plan, the special permit, us and the other applicant agency shall consider. The following convenience and safety of vehicle or pedestrian. Movement within the site and to the adjacent streets, properties, et cetera. Uh, he. Also, the adequacy and methods of disposal for sewage reuse, again, the engineering issues. And that offsite loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the servicing of the buildings. Uh, will not be detrimental. And then we would attach all the conditions that we. Previously were presented tonight and approved.
I'll second that.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay, again, voting members are myself, Jim, Chip, Joe and Tom, so all in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit process pursuant to section one ninety thirty-two dot one. Of the Wakefield zoning bylaw allowing reduction and or alteration to dimensional requirements under section. One ninety dash thirty-two D and table two of the bylaw related to this same thirty unit mid-rise apartment building. That will be condominium unit, that will be condominium units at six ten Salem Street. As shown in the final site plan and final architectural plans previously dated. But not limited to the following, A, reducing the required front side and rear setbacks. So as shown on the site plan. And any other reductions and or alterations from the requirements of section one ninety dash thirty-two D and table two of the Wakefield zone bylaws. To allow the project to be constructed, to be shown on this final site plan and architectural plans. Same special permit findings, same conditions as already presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, any discussion on that motion? Okay, same voting membership?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's who's unanimous.
And the third, I move that we. Grant. The third special permit procession pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, reducing the landscape. Landscape strip requirements and the setback of off-street parking areas. Of a minimum of seven point five feet from the building requirement. As stated in section one ninety dash thirty-seven E. Dash one of the bylaw to be as shown on the final site plan and architectural drawings. And other necessary reductions in the requirements and standards for off-street parking. And loading under article seven of the bylaw related to the thirty unit. Condominium project at six ten Salem Street as shown on the final site plan and our final. Architectural plans. And we looked at the application standards for off-street parking. And loading under article seven. And proves to be infeasible. And the reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility due to the lack of. Uh, basically suitable land and the design considerations. For those factors to be granted and the granting of such a special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character or welfare of the neighborhood or district. And we also looked and determined that the location of the. Structure will not restrict visibility in such a way. As to hinder the safe entry or exit by vehicles. Again, the conditions. And findings for a. Special permit as well as the conditions that have already been presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, any discussion on that motion? Right, same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's unanimous, okay, those are the three required votes, thank you, Brian and team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. All right. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
And oh, Brian, before we close, we will need final. Old paper version, so I can stamp them as final. Right, so if you can provide those to Gail, she'll let me know when they're there and I can stamp them in the building department, add them to the record.
John and Peter, you hear that? Get three sets of full-size plans in my office, please, thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Gail, do we need anything else? Before we move on or close this one, are we just the final plans to be stamped?
Well. I think everything that was presented tonight, you know, even though their draft conditions, the schedule, the construction schedule, you know, everything that was presented. Tonight should be, you know, given to me. For the file.
Yeah, that. All the changes, all the changes, yeah, all the changes that I typed, and yeah, I'll, I'll email that to you tonight, Gail.
Everything, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Gail. Yep, all right. All right, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, are you ready to proceed, or do you need a moment? Did we lose Brian?
He's on mute.
No, mute.
Oh, okay. I'm ready. Okay, great. So our next continued hearing, case twenty-one dash twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, Mbar Wakefield LLC at five hundred Main Street. Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, attorney, Brian McGrail for Mbar. Bob Santanelli is here with me tonight. He just popped on the screen. Hi, Bob. You can unmute Bob, because I think you're gonna have to maybe talk a little bit. This relates to the property at five hundred Main Street, the Santander Bank Building, that Bob is building, is owner of the property, and Paul Finocchio is here too. Hi, Paul.
Hello.
I know you're gonna be here, so we just really tonight wanted to kind of update the board. We've been working on revisions to the plan. We've had a couple of meetings with the engineering department, and I just wanted to, I submitted a kind of a, an update plan to the board, and I can bring that on the screen if I can.
All right, while you're doing that, I just want to mention that Scott Thornton is on with us also from the Association.
Great. Hi, Scott. And we, we will, we have got a, a date with the Traffic Advisory Committee on this, that we will be going before them. I think it's on, I think it's on next Friday, nineteenth, Bob, does that make sense? Yeah, so, so they're gonna review this, and Scott will be there, and anything that we submit to them, we will obviously submit to you. I think we already have, but I'll just double-check that. And so this will go before the TAC, who will report to your board. We just wanted to kind of give you an update of some things that we've been working with the engineering department on, some unique situations as it relates to this site, and some adjustments that we're making, so the board is, is up to speed when we come back with these changes. And they really deal with, the main thing is, which is interesting, just to orient you, so his Main Street, these are our two lots, the vacant lot, and this is where the small building will go, and the drive-up ATM comes off of Richardson Street, and then the issue that we've had, we're, we're dealing with, and we think we solved it. I spoke with Bill Renaud before he went on vacation this week. You can see, see this eight, it says eight-foot, two-inch concrete box cover. There's a huge drainage line for the town that comes through the edge of this property. And Paul did a good job, Paul Finocchio, he located it the best he could, but before we had it about four feet from our, from our building. Bill Renaud doesn't have any record of easements as it relates to this, and so we're working with it, with him and the DPW, because this is a very important drainage structure to the whole town. This, this is, this comes from kind of behind, it comes behind the school, this comes from the middle school, it comes from behind Caparalle's and Morena's, it cuts across North Ave, and it, and it goes all the way down towards Nacella Playground in, out to the river. It's a big pipe, so one of the things that we needed to do in working with Bill Renaud, the town engineer, we needed to actually locate this thing, because we had an idea where it was, but not exact. So Bill asked Bob to hire a contractor, which he did, and, and Paul Finocchio and Bob and representatives from the DPW went out with our machine, and they dug it up to locate it exactly. And it's a gigantic culvert, it's very well-protected, very well-built, it's in a concrete box, they located it exactly. So now, we, we've kind of look, we've kind of relocated our building a little bit to get a little bit further away. We were only about four feet away, the way we had had the building tilted before, and Bill Renaud said, you know, gee, it will be the town's preference if you can be ten feet off of this to give us some room, and, you know, you know, we nicely said, well, you know, with all due respect, you know, the town, you know, doesn't have an easement on our property, and they have a massive pipe going through it, so maybe we can find something that works for everybody. And we did, and what we're going to do, and Bill's fine with this, Bob is gonna go through the expense, he's hired a structural engineer that is gonna reinforce the corner of this building and, and put footings below the culvert, so if this culvert ever has to be dug up to be repaired or replaced, the DPW will be confident that it will not do any damage to the integrity of the building. We've also agreed with the DPW, and we're gonna enter into an agreement with them, it will probably end up being a condition of your decision, that if the DPW has to come through here to do any work, Bob will be responsible to repair the work. He'd be happy to do that. We're, we're betting that there's not gonna have to be a lot of work done here. The other thing, Bob and Paul, maybe you can add to this, we've talked to the light department, there's a bunch of poles and wires back here, which are kind of a mess, and Bob, maybe you can give some insight on what's gonna happen with that?
Well, I think they're uncertain when they determine that the, the vacant parcel might be used also. Initially, they wanted to remove the poles and just go underground back to the only one that uses the, that facility, that, that transmission line is the Blanchard Orchard, Blanchard's Aronings. So they're studying it, they might come in off of Main Street and provide power to Blanchard's from there into our second site from there, rather than, you know, leaving this ugly pole off and, or, or taking the pole down and going, you know, underground line, just to go to Blanchard's. So we'll hear from them on that, Brian, as to what they want to do, and obviously it's what they want to do.
Yeah, so it's really unanswered, Bob. We're still kind of working with them to figure that out.
One way or another, it gets done.
So the effect, the, the, the effect that we wanted to point out to the board that this has is what we've done to get a little bit further away from that culvert is we've, before the building was on an angle, and now we've made it even with Main Street, kind of runs exactly parallel to Main Street. Before, it was turned a little bit, it was tilted to your right as you're looking at the building. And what it's actually done too, I think will be nicer, because what we've decided to do, the sidewalk, the town's sidewalk cuts across our property, and with Bob, what we've talked to engineering about is we're actually gonna take that sidewalk, and we're gonna put it back on the right-of-way, get it off of our property, which is gonna really open up for more landscaping on the side of the building, and we're working with a revised plan with the landscape architect. So I just, you know, that's kind of the update, we're still, these things are all still kind of a work in progress, but we really wanted to let you know that this is kind of where we are with this, and these are the conversations that we're having with the administrative folks at Town Hall.
Brian, that culvert is actually the, the Crystal Lake. Used to be a stream behind there, basically, and it all got buried, and it came from the mansion across the street where the high school used to be. It used to be a pond there, and as everybody knows, that the high school sits on part of, sit, sat on part of this, and the, the far end of this is the same one we did when Shaw's went in, where we put extra culverts over there as well, so it's all part of the same drainage system.
I remember.
Hey, Brian, as you're, as you're talking about just keeping things moving and fluid, the one thing we didn't talk about last time was, we mentioned it, but as you come forward and, and keep things moving, that side of the parking next to the vacant lot needs to be treated as finished, right? We don't know when the vacant lot's gonna be, so we have edge of pavement, we have no granite curbing, you know, you've got no landscaping there, I don't think, so I think we need to see how that vacant lot's gonna be treated, and how that whole edge of parking and everything else is gonna look like the rest of the property.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, questions, board members on this updated plan? Is there, is it on this plan, or if there's another one? Is there any signage proposed? We're working on that. Okay. Yeah, we, you know, we're, we're trying to, to maybe get that done. We're trying to work with the end user to fine-tune that, and if not, we'll just get it done and say that no signage is allowed, and, and they'll come back for signage. But even just in the lot, there's striping to show traffic flow, there's, you know, where there's sort of one-way coming in Richardson. Yeah. You know? There is, we will have a package for that, a sign package, yes. And I'm also thinking a stop sign on Main Street, we're getting a lot, you know, anyway, we just want something else to think about, maybe a stop sign on Main Street as people exit that side.
As a, as a preliminary thing, Bob Santelli, Santelli brought, sent me something that was produced back in July, I think it was, and I looked at it, commented upon it in a draft memo, I pass it on to Brian, basically, and the signage company basically did a fairly good job at identifying items, but I had to sort of focus their attention on other things. I think the biggest concern that I have basically has to do with the signage of, in fact, the July is sort of the starting point, is that the corner on Main Street and Richardson Street basically has a fairly large red element, basically, with antenna on it. That becomes a whole sign in itself because of the corporate color, and because of that, basically, we have a huge issue with the quantity of sign area basically in this project. A lot of the signs that they've shown are allowed, it gets into how big can they be, basically?
Okay. Jim, you'll be, we'll get into those, we'll get into the details, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dave, Mr. Chair. Jim, they are removing the monument sign, that shouldn't have been on the plan that I sent you, they really not keen on having the monument sign, so that reduces a large amount of the signage.
Well, I, I did, I did, you know, ask that whether that was a current plan, and obviously, given the date, it probably wasn't, and I just want to see what the final is, and, but by commenting on it, at least I gave them an additional head start, basically, on some of the issues.
Is this in the district, Jim?
No.
So they won't be coming to design review board?
No.
Okay, so. Okay, so why don't we table any further sign discussion till we actually see a proposed site plan, sign plan?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate the, the initial comments, but yeah, we want to see the, the plan presented to the entire board, and we'll, we'll comment and go from there. But thanks, Bob, for that update. Okay, what else, Brian, or other board members, any? So we got power lines, landscape, signage, traffic? No? Yeah, traffic? Yeah. Yeah, you set that up, okay. What else we still working on?
One more thing, you might be interested, we, with the help of the DPW, we've gotten the plans that they had so far, they're twenty-five percent complete for the Main Street project, and for the, the rail to tail, rail to trail project, and our design will incorporate with those two plans also. By the way, so doing, they'll be doing a lot of work on the sidewalks anyway, on Main Street, so that will be done in, in accordance with, rather than in conflict with the Main Street, downtown Main Street's plan, I'm not sure what they call it.
Does that include any sort of street planting?
We don't know what they're providing it.
Yeah, it's just, it's gonna, yeah, it's gonna sync with all the sidewalks, crosswalks, so.
Bike, bike lanes, sidewalk.
Bike lanes for the, you know, we, 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 he gave us an overlay, and we worked with that, so we're not gonna.
There's also parking off of Richardson Street for, for the trail for the bike train in the plan.
I imagine aspects that can be incorporated into your plans will be done. If there's unknowns, there be their conditions or things that we know, that, again, there might be some things still being worked out with the town, right? Potentially. Correct, because I think there will be a twenty-five percent date, but we're, we're doing our best to be in sync, so we don't have to rip stuff up later. Right. Okay. All right, I know last minute, this was continued at the last hearing, but we envisioned trying to cover a lot of ground, but it sounds like the team's still in progress with a lot of these aspects, so is there anything, anything else that we can review tonight, or we're looking to continue until you're? We're looking to continue, we just really wanted to give you that update, so you're in the loop of what's going on, and, you know, and Bill's on, Bill Renaud's on vacation this week, and be back Monday, so we'll be back at it with him, hopefully, and then we have the TAC on the, on the nineteenth, so we, we would expect to be back on the twenty-fourth. Okay, anything else, board members, then?
No.
All right, again, not a lot of new testimony presented tonight, but I will, for the record, open it up to public comment or question. If you do have a, if you have one, please raise your hands, again, on the information presented tonight, or we're just gonna cover more ground next time. Can I go to the participant list here? Looking for hands raised. Not seeing any hands raised. Okay, so we'll close it to public testimony for the evening. So, next meeting, two-twenty-four?
I move that we continue this to February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thanks for the update, team, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
You.
Brian, you're sticking around, right, because you have one later, right? I believe. Yes, I'll be, I'll be behind the screens here. Okay. All right, our other continued hearing for the evening, case twenty-one dash thirty-five, Emerson Street Holdings LLC at eight to ten Emerson Street.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's mine, thank you. For the record, Michael McCarthy, representing the applicant, who is represented by its principal, Steve Lafferty, who's with us on Zoom. Also joining us on Zoom is Ray Gertner, the project engineer, as well as Paul Finocchio, who did the, the site layout. I'll do my best here to share the, my is the site plan, hopefully that comes up. Did that come up, Mr. Chairman?
It did.
Okay, great. So, so this is, um, this is eight to ten Emerson Street, this is a very old property, has, it's a six-unit property, it has three units on the left side of the building, three units on the right. There was a two thousand and eleven decision by this board that recognized the non-conforming six-family status of property, and also, and I have it, and I can call it up, but I have sent it along, if the board would like to see it, I can call it up, but essentially recognized that it, it gave authority to the owner to reconfigure the inside of the structure so long as there was no expansion of the footprint, which we are proposing here, and the same number of units remain, which is also what we're proposing here. The relief that we're looking for is simply a finding, this would go right to the second prong of the test, that what's proposed here, which specifically is the addition, as it's depicted on the site plan, and just a good ray, we'll get into it a little bit more detail in terms of the architecture, is an expansion on that right side of the property. It doesn't require any variances, it would simply be a finding, it's to the rear of the property, I've just placed seventy-three-plus feet off the, the rear boundary, so it's all inside the, the rear yard setback. In terms of parking, well, let me just say, there's no increase, the only increase is in square footage and the footprint. There's no increase in bedrooms proposed, there's no increase in units proposed, so there's no change in parking ratios, or for that matter, density or intensity of the use. The simple request is to expand that side of the building to make what is a mess, and I know Jim has, has inspected it, I've submitted an engineering report, and we have pictures of the property, but essentially, on the, on the right side, there's a structural chimney located in the middle. We have pictures of the property, but essentially on the, on the right side, there's a structural chimney located in the middle of that side of the building, which is in the middle, it was built on the ground. So over the years, the many years, it's slowly sunk. And it's pulling the rest of that right side down. There's a lot of water damage and rot as well to the, to the joists and the swallows, which Jim and, and Ray, the architect, can speak to. So I'll, I guess I'll leave my part of the presentation to this point. At, at that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I would just defer to Mr. Gerton, to Ray Gerton, the project architect, to, to describe a little bit of what, what's proposed, just on the right side of the building. There's no, no modifications to the left side proposed. So with your consent, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to Mr. Gerton.
Ray. Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question first? Did we reference why in our 2011 decision, we said that, you know, we'd, we'd grant, we'd find that it was a given six family?
You did.
Yeah. Want no additions put on it?
Uh, you, you, so Chip, I'll read that, that, rather than try to stumble over, calling it up if this will suffice. I did submit the decision too, but essentially it says, based on the testimony evidence presented in relevant sections of the bylaw, the board found that the six family dwelling was legal at the time it was commenced. That's continued as such, that is currently a legal, non-conforming structure indoor use. The board also recognized that the existing interior floor plan of the existing structure and interior layout of the existing units may be changed, altered, modified, without the necessity of any relief from the board, as long as the number of units does not exceed six, and the exterior footprint or exterior dimensions of the existing structures is not changed, altered, modified. That's all it says. I, my, my sense is that that was requested by the then owner of the property. So a predecessor entitled to my client, so that they could do some work inside. And just recognized that if they were going to expand the footprint, they'd need to come back. There's nothing in the decision whatsoever that expresses any particular peculiar concerns on the part of the board that, that they should not have, could not come back for that type of relief.
I think it also probably was put there in reference to keeping it six units.
Yeah, oh, yep, for sure. Yep, yep. I agree.
Okay.
So, Ray, are you with us? I know you are.
I am. Yes.
Why don't you, why don't you take over from here if you would?
All right, can you bring up the, the floor plans? I see you have tabs up there, what looks to be all the floor plans and elevations that we've prepared.
Does that come up?
Yep, good. All right, for the record, my name is Ray Gerton. I'm the architect. We're engaged to do a project here to, basically, as Mike was saying, enlarge the existing units that are in the building right now. We're not adding a new unit or adding bedrooms. It's basically just, uh, we have a deteriorating rear wing on this building and, which is going to come down, the, the really non-existing foundations underneath it. It's poorly founded. And it's an opportunity now to construct a new concrete foundation and build up new from there in expanding the existing apartment units that are in the building presently. We are increasing the size of it. As Mike mentioned, we're keeping the, the south wall along the, the property line, where it's close along the property line. We're maintaining that wall line, but increasing in towards the north, towards the center of the site and out towards the rear of the, of the building. Expanding about, I think it's about seven and a half feet in width from what it is now. It's approximately 13 and a half feet wide now. That rear wing, and it'll become 21 feet, 21 feet wide. And presently, it, it goes out, I think it's about 16 feet out from the back of the building. We're proposing to go out 30 feet. And that allows us to get more reasonable sized apartment units for both of those units. The architecture is very similar to what's there now. It's basically a gable roof wing coming off the back of the building. We're proposing to do the same thing, except raising it up a little higher to get better ceiling height and attic space for potential future use perhaps. And, but maintaining that same architecture of the building, gable roof, double hung windows, and keeping, keeping within the character of the existing building. And marrying the two gable roofs together, the new roof into the, the back of the, the original building's lodge roof. That's about all I have. Any other, any questions? If you happen to answer anything.
Nope. None for me. Jim, did you want to, or do we want to hear about?
Yeah, I, I'd want to talk about the structural condition that I saw, because I met with Steve on, on Saturday, basically out there to walk it with him. Mike, can you pull up that original site plan you had with the building on it?
Yes.
Overlaying the expansion of it?
Yep. Uh, right, right there, Jim?
Uh, yeah, that one. Okay. So the original building is eight, ten, eight slash 10 there. It's a box. And there have been two wings put on this thing over time. Those two wings, at least the one that says two story on the right, but I assume because the other wing came in at the same time, it's on the left. No foundation was ever put under them. They are, the wood structure basically goes down into the ground several feet. And it's all, the one on the right is all rotted, beetle ridden, as well as water damage basically, because it's particularly on the north side. I strongly suspect the second floor on the other side, the second story on the other side, since it went in about the same time, would have the same damage. So that whole section there is compromised, including, I suspect the story, the one story section on the right, that's just beyond the two story section that's in there, that there is no foundation under that as well. The inside of the building basically is, as mentioned basically about the chimney settling, has pulled the floors down on the inside. And right where the right hand porch is, along that faces on the street, is all the joists along there are pretty much pulled out of their sockets along there. So the, the floor in that section basically is settled out. The previous owner, I believe, put shoring under it, so they put a two by four petition to hold the floor up. But it's not holding the wall in. And I suspect there's probably some damage in the foundation in that area too because of movement. But suffice it to say, there is little value in that second story piece on the right, nor that first story piece, because it's all gonna have to come out and foundation is gonna have to go under it, and it's gonna have to be rebuilt. I don't think the upper sections can be saved, but time will tell. The architect can look at, the engineers can look at it. It just looks terrible. And I suspect, like I said before, foundation issues on the, on the left hand side will follow as well. Plus, if it doesn't have a full foundation under it anyway, is the building department, the building code's gonna make them put a full foundation under it to begin with. So there's a lot more work than, than just this proposed addition coming forward. And I, it wouldn't surprise me that in the future, that this owner comes back to the board with other issues that come up as they go through this. But at this point, he's done, at least on the right hand side, considerable amount of exploratory work to understand what his problem is. It's much greater than he thought. So, and I think there's a request coming forward basically to do more demolition, but stay within the proposed footprint that's here, both in the proposed area and the past area.
No argument. The, there's a lot of work. It was, I don't think Steve expected any of this when he bought the property, but, but he owns it now and he's trying to make it work. He's trying to make it work in, you know, in the mode that it currently exists as opposed to raising the whole structure and trying to come in with something else.
Can you, Mike, can you pull up just one or two photographs?
I, I will try right now, Jim.
All right, so the report we have from the Boston Building Consultant doesn't mention the left side, does it?
No, it doesn't. Can you see that picture or no?
No, we're still seeing the site plan.
The, the, when I talked to Steve out there, he says that the guy, the, the engineer that looked at it said that there wasn't any compromise on that left hand side. I'm just telling you that it was built the same way as the right hand side. It may not be compromised above ground, but I guarantee it's, it's rotted down below because it's sitting in water and all like, particularly on the north side, on the left hand side of that section.
Are you now seeing any pictures or no?
No.
No.
Yeah, depending on what you chose to share, if you just shared your app, this application, we're gonna see the PDFs.
Oh, okay.
If you chose to share your whole screen, then you can switch to the pictures.
Yeah. Obviously not great at this, but. I don't think I'm gonna have much luck here. I apologize. Let me try this. One more, one more time.
Yep.
Oh, there we go. How's that?
Something's coming. Okay.
So that's a picture of the inside. I can probably get some other pictures up now.
This is on the second floor where the chimney is settled and pulled the floor with it. The outside's the one that's most dramatic.
Yeah, I wish they. Steve, you don't have them, do you?
I have them on my phone, Mike. I held it up, but it's not really, unfortunately, not really. As, you know, you can kind of get an idea just that way. I wasn't, um, I didn't load them onto this computer. I'm not too familiar with Zoom, unfortunately. And you can see some of these with the extent of the damage.
I mean, a lot of it's gonna come down to, you know, ultimately, the building department, the building code and reconstructing this building, right?
Yeah.
The right way. For the purposes of this, this board, if you're asking to extend, when those reconstructments take place, you want to extend the rear part of the building as shown.
Right.
And you need a finding from us, so.
That's all. That's right.
But, um. So I mean, I'm not sure how far we have to go with the details in terms of, you know, the condition of the the structure, the foundation and so forth, because it's going to be redone, right?
Right, right.
And the existing footprint with the expansion is noted, but along that right side, the front, whatever needs to be done, it'll stick to that footprint and then expand in the back as shown.
Right, that's right.
No, I don't know, board members, I'm not, I'm not sure how far we have to go with this, really. The relief requested, but.
Those you need to understand is they've got bigger troubles than they have. And you're, you're absolutely correct. The building department basically, in this case, as far as structural and code.
Okay, any other comments, questions, board members?
Have we added any bedrooms to this addition or just?
There's no bedrooms and there's, there's no added, Joe, there's no added change in units and there's no change in the bedroom number.
And it'll maintain the same amount of parking.
Yeah, we get plenty of parking. It's double.
Yeah, it looks like reconfigured a few in the back to accommodate the addition, but yeah, still have the 12. Yeah, again, if anything, making the finding that it's not gonna be substantially more detrimental, the building's gonna be improved, right? In terms of non-conformities, you're not increasing.
Increasing the non.
No, they're just, they're just encroaching farther, but they're still needing the setback, right?
So we're, we're increasing the side yard setback encroachment.
Is that, that, in, in the front, it's 8.3, at the back of the existing two story, the crosshatch at 7.8. So that actually stays.
That increases the non-conformity.
Yeah.
And then our total lot coverage is increased.
But it's within the, it's, it's below the threshold.
It is below?
Yeah.
So the only, the only increase in the non-conformity is the right side setback.
That, actually, there's no increase. Chip, that, what's not shown is at the end of the rear, the rear of the existing building, it's 8 feet, it stays that way. So the, the building as it currently exists starts at 8.3, 7.8. So there's actually no, no increase in the side yard, no form conformity. There is no increase in any non-conformity, except it's.
Can you put the site plan back up then, Mike?
Yeah, yep, yep.
And, yeah, they're on consecutive pages between old and new, but it, they both say 7.8, so.
Did that come up?
Yeah.
Thank God. So I, the zoning table has been added at my request. Paul did that today, so you don't have that, but, but there's your lot coverage. It's 35% requirement. It's, it's well below that. Open space doesn't change. Right here, it's 7.8 with the handers, and then it's 7.8 back there. So that's, that's consistent. That doesn't change. That non-conformity does not.
So I have, I, Mike, just, my math isn't all that good and geometry was a long time ago. But if, but if the, if the front is 8.3 and the back condition is 7.8.
Right here. Yep.
Yeah. And that lot line on the right is straight. That means you're either curving the wall. I don't know how that can be.
So I would defer to either the architect or Steve or Paul to answer that question.
Because if that, if the house line is staying straight and the right side is staying straight, the back corner 13 feet farther back has to be closer.
That'd be correct, but what I did is I adjusted the front dimension, so it's 5.5 feet on the jog on the first, where it says the first story.
Right here.
So that allowed me to keep the 7.8 feet in the rear of the, rear of the structure.
So are you not 8.3 there?
It's still, no, it's eight, it's still, it's still 8.3, but you have to look at the existing plan, because I, that suggested from 5.5 down to 5.5 feet wide, so that I can maintain the 7.8 in the back of the structure, which is what the existing structure was for setback.
Right, so the existing one shows it at 8.1.
Right, so I adjusted it by the two inches, so I can maintain that rear setback, side yard setback.
So what was 8.1 is now 8.3 as proposed.
So that front is pulled in a little bit and that keeps the addition.
Correct.
Into the addition at that 7.8. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, does that help you up with your geometry?
Uh, no, but I'll believe it. Still, if it's in a, yeah.
There is, given the structural condition there, there's plenty of opportunity to keep the, as proposed, believe me.
How much is coming down versus what's being added? Are we ripping that whole two story, one story piece off?
Steve or Ray?
Uh, yes, including the, the little one story.
Yeah, the plan, the plan is to rip the entire, entire addition with the roof front that is on top of the addition down and dispose of it and create a new foundation, hopefully within the existing, within the proposed footprint. I just lost this.
And the left side to be determined, again.
Yeah, we're not doing anything right now. And we, and quite frankly, we don't have a plan. I mean, there's no, we're not holding anything back.
And what, and the date of these plans, I don't have. Can you scroll?
There's a, this plan that I'm showing right now is dated November 16th, 2020, but it's, but it's signed 2/10/2021.
There's a revision date on there of 2/10/21 up above my signature.
Oh, yeah, okay. Right there, I'm showing that. So, yep. And the, uh, radio plans, are they, yeah, they're eleven twenty-three twenty.
Correct.
But it's really the site plan that, that's controlling the finding.
Uh, that's right. I would reference the architectural system to show, though, that there's no, no additional bedrooms.
Or units, or units, yeah.
Yeah. But I'll make sure that gets referenced. Assuming.
Right. All right, any other comments or questions, board members? Again, there's going to be more to this project than goes beyond our board, but that is for building department and other agencies to deal with. But in terms of this finding, any comments or questions? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. If anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hands. Participant list. Not seeing any hands. So I'll close it to public testimony. Uh, let me just see, make sure correspondence. Uh, no DPW engineer reviewed the plans, no comments from the engineer from a DPW standpoint. And the fire department. No objections. They will make specific recommendations, stipulate requirements once the plan's been reviewed by the Fire Prevention Bureau. Depending on the scope, a residential fire sprinkler may be required. So is there one already, given the number of units?
I don't, it's really old. I don't, I don't think so.
No, there isn't. There's no long panel and individual units, but in the individual detectors and the units, but no, there's no sprinkler system.
Okay, so that might be something that's taken up with the fire department.
Yep.
And they properly, okay. So that's, of course, one is received from other town boards. Okay, unless there's anything else. So the fi, this finding is actually, again, because of the number of units, right, Mike?
Correct.
Right to one ninety fifty B.
Correct. It would be, um, that there, what the proposed expansion of the structure would not be substantially more detrimental to neighborhood than the existing non-conformity.
Correct. So this doesn't have the two-prong thing like paragraph A because of the.
It does not. You go right to the second test.
Just not substantially more detrimental. Okay.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find that the, that the site plan as presented by Paul Finocchio decided dated two ten twenty-one and the architectural plans presented by Gerton Architects are dated eleven. What, Mike?
Twenty-three, twenty.
Eleven twenty-three twenty represent the fact that uh, there is an addition going on, that the bedrooms have not changed and that the, uh, non-conformities are not being increased, that the right side is staying at seven point eight in its smallest decision. It's going back and staying at seven point eight feet at its closest to the right-hand side. And given those factors, that we go right to the second prong and that, uh, the work being proposed is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Um, let's see. Okay, and this was regular voting members. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that is unanimous.
Right, great. Thank you very much.
Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Michael, are you ready?
I am ready. Yep, so.
All right, we're moving on to new hearings then, just for the record. And this one we've seen before. And we're going to see it again. Twelve, twenty-one dash thirty-six, this is a new hearing technically, but a property we've dealt with before. Case twenty-one dash thirty-six, Charles Realty LLC. Charles J. Dougherty, manager at four oh four Lowell Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael McCarthy representing the, the applicant represented by its principal, CJ Dougherty, also on Zoom is Shane Lozey, who is the project architect, as well as Paul Finocchio, the project engineer. You're right, you've seen this a long time. Um, and you haven't seen a lot of progress, other than the building getting knocked down. We can, this was originally a project by Morocco Skipper. There were nine applications submitted. That was kind of early in these, in the multi-bi-law era. So rather than doing what Brian did in the last and what I've done since, going into three groups, we did nine decisions. We came back to you when CJ threw, you know, the Kennedy bought the property. We came back to this board in July of two thousand nineteen and modified all prior decisions through one application as we're, as we're proposing here. In that case, the modification really was just to add the new entity or to change entities. So CJ Dougherty is, is, is an outfit. It started by CJ's dad. CJ's been around for a while now, too. He's done a lot of work. They're very, very qualified. Um, I think we're lucky to have him on this project at this point. And by frame of reference, or by reference, CJ Dougherty was the contractor, not the developer, but the GC down at the North Avenue buildings that John Main and, and company did. So you know the type of thing they, they, they do. One of the things that CJ encountered when he bought the property was that property had not been permitted through conservation. Within, later on, it's within two hundred feet of a, of a river. It's underground at that point. I think it's down by the railroad crossing, but in any event, this had to be permitted through conservation, which has been completed fairly recently. So there is an order of conditions. Um, you don't have it, but you will have it. I'll get it over to you. Um, so that slowed things down quite a bit. Um, but CJ is, they're ready to go. When they went through the con-con process and when they did their own engineering review, they found that the water table at the property wasn't what the original applicant thought it was. It was higher. Um, so in essence, what is proposed is the elimination of the underground parking that was originally proposed. Everything kind of, pardon the pun, flows from that. So I will, um, uh, with, with your permission at this point, Mr. Chairman, if there are no questions, me, I will defer to, um, Shane Lozey, the project architect, to kind of walk us through his presentation so you can see. And he's done a list of, 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 of the changes, the revisions. Um, and he actually shows them on his presentation of what's different from the proposed, I'm, I'm sorry, the allowed and previously permitted plan and what's proposed now. So he can walk us through that as well. That's okay with you?
Sounds good.
Shane, it's all yours.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Shane, screen. I'm sorry, this isn't coming up.
Do you see the option to share?
Yeah, but it's only coming up for a whiteboard. All the other.
Yeah, we've occasionally seen this with certain people trying to share. I'm not sure why that happens.
All about that, Shane, is it? Can you see that, Mr. Chairman?
We can.
Is that page one?
Yeah, that's the presentation, so.
You're gonna walk it through, Shane?
Uh, yeah, you can just click on the lower right, the little.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's like a little, um, no, go down on your screen. There's a little like, um, pedestal or, uh, a little presentation icon, lower right.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't see it. The band is blocking it out on my screen.
Yep. Looks like, yep.
That it? Please need to go back to slide one, Mike.
Yeah, yeah.
Who knew I'd be the one who did this? All right.
Um, okay, so this is the updated rendering. Basically, the only change on the front of the building was that this was a second garage door to go down to the lower level. So that garage door was eliminated. Uh, you can go to the next slide, Mike. Um, we still have the same eight units that we originally had. Uh, six two-bedrooms, two one-bedrooms. Nothing on the second or third floor has changed, which all these units are on those two levels. Uh, with regards to the parking, we are decreasing from twenty spaces to sixteen spaces. Um, we had four exterior spaces. Now we will have five. And we had sixteen garage spaces, garage spaces, two of which were tandem, and we're reducing that to eleven garage spaces, but no tandem spots.
Oh, sorry.
Um, and then everything zoning-wise basically remained the same. Uh, we're decreasing the open area violation from twenty-three point five percent to twenty-five point five percent. And, uh, we're just, again, reducing the parking spaces to sixteen spaces, so we're at, again, uh, two spaces per unit where the requirement's one point five. Go ahead, Mike.
Yep.
Um, and then this is just kind of some contextual photos. Uh, we're burning, burning street here and then Wall Street here, and then this was the previous building that's since been torn down. Uh, with the, so this is the updated site plan or architectural site plan. Uh, basically, the two major changes, again, are the elimination of the garage door on the top left. So that area used to be the same as the middle area garage opening. You can see at the curb cut. So we're eliminating that curb, that secondary curb cut and that driveway area in the front of the building and replacing it with landscaping. On the top right of the screen, we're eliminating a stair that was down to the basement and adding a parking space on that side as the lot kind of angles off and gets wider at that side, we're proposing three spaces on that end of the parking lot versus the two we previously had. So we, again, that goes to the five exterior parking spaces and then the eleven on the inside. Uh, this was, this is the original approved landscaping plan from not even the last time we came here, but the time before that. But so it was just kind of reference that we're maintaining. It's a similar landscaping plan that was originally approved. All right, good. And this is a blow-up of that front section. So again, we can see the added landscaping on the left side. This, this view turns from the previous slide that we had. Go ahead, and then the next slide is a comparison between the two. So the existing, the pre-existing or the pre-approved, the previously approved plan is on the lower portion of the screen. The updated plan is up above and you can see basically the main, the main difference is the removal of the driveway area and the curb cut and replacing that with landscaping. On the right side, where the residential entry is, we are also lowering that, so we had a small ramp up to it and now it'll be at grade, so. We don't, and then we had another ramp interior of that, so access to the elevator will now be at a lower level, so we'll need less ramping to get up to that level. And if you go to the next slide, Mike? And again, this is just a blow-up of the rear, with the existing on the bottom, where we see the stair to the basement and the two parking spaces versus the stair being eliminated and adding three parking spaces there. And, okay, Mike? Uh, this is the updated site plan from Paul. Um, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the oil-water separator is moving inside where it was previously in the driveway.
Right, Paul?
Yeah, correct. We'll be changing that location. And also just to let you know, I have to, didn't realize on the changing the plans, but I have to update my entranceway. They still showed it on the left-hand side, so it'll move more towards the middle where the other one was. I'll take care of that also.
Um, and then this was just the electrical plan. Um, I believe CJ, you can correct me, you can probably go through this better than I can. I think you're connecting to the, the Jason transformer, right?
Correct. That's the underground, um, plan that was created by Wakefield Light. We've actually already installed the conduit across the public way, just in case we were to get the green light to start before the spring. The first order of operation is to, um, involves the transformer at the neighboring property and will need to transfer their power and telecom underground, because there is a pole that exists within the footprint of the proposed building. So that conduit underneath the public way is already installed.
Okay. Uh, this was the previous basement that's being eliminated. Uh, you can see the six regular parking spaces and two tandem spaces. Oh, I'm sorry, seven parking spaces and two tandem spaces. And then the stair that I previously spoke of in the back driveway that's being eliminated.
As a result of this, the basement goes away, but the building height doesn't change. It's just more a grade when you pull in the garage.
Exactly. Yep, yep. Um, it gives us a little more room. We were getting a little tight on the structure, too, because our parking space has been accessible, so to maintain the height in the garage and steel, our steel was getting pretty heavy and for some of those supports, so it just gives us a little more room without increasing the height of the building at all.
Good.
Um, this is the proposed ground floor plan. So, so on the top left of the plan, it's a little hard to see in this image, but we're, this was where the ramp down originally was, and we're replacing that with these four parking spaces. Uh, we've brought a utility room on the lower left, that brown space that's surrounded by the blue, that becomes our utility room. And the hallway that's in the blue on the lower left, originally was a long ramp or a pretty, uh, steep ramp up to the elevator level. And we've been able to kind of minimize that little, a little bit, and it's not as drastic as a great change. And the same inside the garage. We have, uh, we have a high point right in the middle and then drains on each side, as we have doors on both sides of the garage. Um, and with drains on, at the, at those areas, but we were able to kind of bring the whole level down more in line with the grade of the sidewalk and street in front. Um, and then again, this just kind of shows the difference, the previously approved plan on the lower portion of the screen and the newly proposed one, where you see the ramp being eliminated and, and, um, changed out for some parking spaces.
Is the, is the garage width the same as what we approved? It looks like it's at fifteen feet? It just moved. Is that the same width, fifteen, so?
Which, I'm sorry, where?
The width of the curb cut and the new driveway into the.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
It was, that drawing's way too small for me to see. I'm just looking.
It was.
Going from two doors to one door, too, right?
Right, so we're eliminating half of what we had for curb cut space.
Right, so it's fifteen feet, so really one car at a time, basically, right?
Yeah.
Not that we're expecting a lot of traffic flow, but just, um, just so folks are aware. Okay, thanks.
I think it was, I think we were trying to minimize it before, so we had thirty feet. I think we had two fifteen-foot curb cuts. And so this was the remainder of that. Um, and okay, go ahead, Mike. Uh, this is the second and third floor plan, which hasn't changed, so you see the, those four units on each floor. Um, roof plan. And here's the front of elevation. Again, on the lower left, the garage door has been replaced by windows. And then the grade lowered a little bit for the garage door and the entry door. And the next slide shows the comparison between the two. And the next slide shows the comparison between the two. So again, you see that garage door being eliminated. On the back, we saw now that we have about half the space of the garage, we can eliminate some of the garage venting. Cause it's in a closed garage. So that's just showing that these vents have been eliminated. And then we are eliminating the parapet. Go back for a second. The parapet on the top of that to better increase the roof drainage. And then the same thing on these side elevations. We had a small parapet in the middle of the building, which is being eliminated. We're keeping the parapets in the front of the building as previously approved. And again, eliminating some of those garage vents that are no longer going to be needed.
Why are we eliminating, why are you eliminating the parapets?
There's a request from CJ. I think it helps. It helps with some of the drainage because we are using gutters on the building.
You mean it makes it easier?
I think, I think it was actually to decrease the the, the height to make it less intrusive than mass.
Actually, I think.
It needs the parapet.
It needs the parapet. I mean, we spent I don't know how long we spent months literally going over this and, and designing and colors and all of that. And I appreciate what you have to do because of the water level, but I don't think anything in the rest of the building should be changed. It's, it's been discussed. Neighbors have discussed it. We've had, we've looked at review. I just don't think anything in the rest of the building should be changed other than what you have to do for the water table. Ditto, my opinion.
I agree.
You wouldn't object to the elimination of the vents, Chip? I, I know, I would not eliminate the elimination of the vents would be a good thing. I'm sorry, I'm talking more architectural.
Why are we eliminating? I mean, we still have spaces. You said they're not needed.
We still need vents. We're eliminating, we, we don't need as many vents as we originally had because we have half the space of the garage.
Less parking volume, less exhaust.
Remember they had a lot more spaces in the previous.
They had five. I don't know about less.
Well, we had, we had, but we had two, we had two floors of parking versus now one floor. So it's not the amount of spaces as much as the volume of the space that was dedicated to the garage.
Yeah. And, and just for clarification, I believe I, I was on, if memory serves, the parapet, I think was eliminated when we went from the initial iteration to the second one. Where we, we initially found the water table was, was too high for the skipper's design. We raised the building two feet to get it out of the presumed water table. And to keep the, the height down, we eliminated the parapet. Is what, was what I had recalled. So I'm not, I'm not objecting to the, to the return of the parapet. But I, I thought at the time when the building was raised to allow for the water table in the second that, that was the cost.
Excuse me?
It's still below the sixty feet, right?
Correct, but I think the initial concept was that we were, when we went from the skipper's design to the one that had the, the full basement parking. The footprint was going to come up two feet. So to offset that change, the, the parapet was eliminated. I, I thought that was the, the deal with it. As far as the parapet staying or going, I'm indifferent to its inclusion. So if, if the board wants it, then we can certainly add it back on, but just.
I just think it adds a lot to that rear exposure.
I will tell you, this original drawings were submitted for permit. And I reviewed them on three nine twenty. And the only thing that I had issue was there are two landscape materials schedules that are not coordinated. And I made the point at that, that everything was compliant except that. And that I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve the plans for permit until it was straightened out. And at that time, all of this parapet was there. Now I see in the material that was sent to us, there were several other permit sets, but they never went to the building department. Nor was I requested to look at anything down there. And when I look at those other permitted sets, yes, the parapet was eliminated. But never in the stuff that we discussed, nor the stuff that was before us for approval. Were there, were those parapets taken away?
As CJ said, we're okay with the parapets.
I just want to be here for, you know, for what went on, basically. Whether they are here, whether they don't mind or not, historically, basically, they were never talked about. Some of the group, some of the design group or whatever might have discussed it, not before us, not before we submitted to the building department, period.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get an updated plan.
Right. I got that. I made note.
But, okay, so garage vents are okay to go, parapets. Do we, do board members, do you want to go back to these drawings? Do you want to back up at all? Or did you get everything?
Have any materials changed at all? Is there any discussion about any material change or color change?
No.
Materials, yes. Planting, yes. There are two, there are still two planting schedules that do not match on what's submitted before us. And in fact, on one planting schedule, they've downed the quantity of material on that planting schedule, assumingly based on what they've changed here. Also, some of the, the areas that are bubbled, not all are bubbled. In the, there are more areas that should be bubbled, not that they have a great effect on anything that we see here, but they're not noted as changed areas.
So when we come back, Jim, is, is this something we can run by you prior to the next hearing to make sure that the, the schedules are consistent?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that.
But I mean, it's if, once, once you get the schedule, Chip originally approved the schedule, which I think was on the landscape drawing. But there's one and an architectural drawing as well, which is sheet one oh one or something like that.
Okay.
It's one, one zero, A one zero.
So the landscaping should match the architectural.
Gotcha. Alright, we'll make sure that happens. And we'll run it with your permission, Mr. Chairman, and we'll run it by, with Jim prior to the meeting. Make sure his concerns are covered.
Okay, did we hear materials didn't change? Colors?
Correct.
Jim?
Uh, yes, the only thing I've seen is the, it, it has to do with landscape area.
Oh, okay. But the, the party board, the materials on the building, the architectural materials, windows, lighting.
Now.
Those cut sheets, that hasn't changed.
Those are all fine. Those match. Basically, I don't, like Chip, I don't mind getting rid some vents on the outside of the building. I do mind that the parapet, parapets are taken away. I think that Chip's absolutely right. We spent huge amount of time on this and other designs, basically getting it right. So.
Point taken, and they've already going to put them back.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're good. We're good.
Point made. We, we get it.
Next? Any more?
So again, the previous material sheet, which we went over. Nothing changed there. The exterior elements, again, these all stayed the same from the original approvals. This is the updated building section, just showing the elimination of the basement on the bottom. The bottom drawing. And again, the top drawing shows that being eliminated and just parking on that one grade level.
Okay. Oh, and the slideshow, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
That's, that's basically a, a presentation, Mr. Chairman. I took a couple of notes along the way. I will say that we did, um, we had good cooperation and a good relationship with the Butters all the way through, right from Mr. Skipper to date. So these plans and, and renderings have been shared with Mr. Candy and the neighbors. And certainly they can speak for themselves, but I think they're, they were happy with the, with the proposal.
Okay.
Just so the board knows, we did reach out.
Thank you. Good to know.
And Mike, what are we trying to do here?
We want to revise, so we want to modify the prior decisions by allowing the, the project to be constructed as shown on the revised plan. So what basically?
So we're not asking for minor modification?
No, this is not. No, this is fully noticed. This is, this is, you know, a full modification. Because we're changing, you know, it may not be that many things, but it's enough that it's more minor, so modification.
Right. If this had been brought before us as a potential, we wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been, right?
Yeah.
It's the right thing to do. It's the right course of action.
It's fully noticed and it's a, you know.
New theory. Yep.
But that's it. Mechanically, Chip, it's procedurally, it's a modification. Major modification substituting the new plans for the old.
Which will get updated.
Yeah, so to that point, I have several notes. On the engineering, we're going to update the entrance way. Paul, Paul Finocchio brought that up. He's also going to update his plan to show the oil water separator inside, not in the driveway. Obviously, architecturally, the parapets are going back in. We're going to coordinate on the landscaping. My notes have it make sure the two planning schedules meet, you know, are the same as the architectural. Sheet eight, ten. That's what I have in terms of.
It should be that the landscaping meets the architectural. Landscaping is the one that prevails.
Okay, alright.
And any, right, the architectures that show planting should be consistent with that. Yes.
Right. Yeah. And we're gonna, we'll run that, we'll make sure that, you know, we're hitting the points prior to the next meeting. So this doesn't matter.
Okay, we have received correspondence from town boards regarding this new application. So there's one from the fire department with a few points here, Mike. Have you seen it?
I, the only one I've seen is the engineering department memo.
Alright, so I mean, there's probably some usual stuff here that might have been on the original application around fire control systems and other things that seem to be pretty standard. I would just, I would just ask you to review it in case there's anything in particular you go to adjust in the plans. It mentions balconies, landscape mulch, a few things that you just might want to take into consideration and confirm with.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do.
And then, right, the town engineer had some general comments.
We'll address them. We, we're prepared to discuss them tonight, but we don't have a written response. This is something that we recently got. CJ has looked at it. Paul Finocchio has looked at it. In, in a nutshell, Paul Finocchio has been out there since this memo with the DPW. We will camera what they need cameraed. They are trying to locate. Paul, maybe you can fill in here, but you actually, can you fill in, Paul, in terms of?
There's a lot of points here. Or do you want to comment on them and just come back at the next hearing with the?
Yeah, that's fine. In the interest of time, we happen to do that.
Okay, I mean, there's a lot of points here. General comments, water, sewer, drainage.
Yeah, we're on topic. Part of the answer will be that we've been through CONCON. You know, all, all of that has been pretty, is pretty tight, but we'll share that with you prior to the next hearing. And we'll get your response to the memo prior to the next hearing as well. In the interest of time, we don't need to go through it unless you'd like us to, in which case we're happy to do it point by point.
I mean, I would prefer to do it with your responses, just so.
Yeah.
Each point, and we're not sort of working it out here. Yeah. And then I, I do have a copy of the CONCON's letter as well with the order of conditions attached, so.
Oh, terrific.
When was that dated? It was dated the twenty seconds. So yeah, these are in the file, the CONCON's order of conditions. Okay.
And do we have those, Dave?
I think like I said upfront, they haven't been forwarded to us scaled, did we? And if not.
I did say that, and they have not been. So what I'll do is when everything is forwarded to the board through you, Mr. Chairman, I'll add that, the order of conditions to it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, so that's been the correspondence. Okay? Anything else, board members, for tonight?
Not for me.
Well, we're continuing, so we'll, we'll circle back on this. We'll get.
So there's time.
Yeah.
We're getting there. We're getting there. We're getting. So, Mr. Chairman, we'd request the continuance of the next hearing with the expectation that we'd be able to supply everything in advance. If not, we'll let the board know and we'll adjust accordingly.
Okay. Thanks. So given that this was a new hearing and there was some information presented, I will open up public testimony. Again, relevant to that tonight's information. Anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing any hand waving, not seeing raised hands in the participant list, so we'll close it to public testimony for the evening.
I move that we continue this hearing until the twenty-fourth of February.
Second.
Any discussion? All voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Alright, sounds good. Thanks for coming back. Looking forward to this thing getting built. It's been a nice offer a while, long enough. But anyway, we'll see you in two weeks.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next new hearing. Welcome back, Mr. McGrail. Case twenty-one dash thirty-seven Crescent Commons Development LLC at forty-six, forty-four, forty-six and forty-eight Crescent Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, attorney Brian McGrail, representing the applicant Crescent Commons Development LLC. This is an application before your board pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty B. And the regulations promulgated pursuant to that statute, which was seven sixty CMR fifty-six. For a comprehensive permit to authorize the construction of Crescent Commons Apartments, a fifty-six unit, one building rental apartment development on properties located at forty-four, forty-six and forty-eight Crescent Street in Wakefield, which I will collectively refer to all of those as the property. With me tonight is our development team and developer. First of all, Crescent Commons LLC Development, Crescent Commons Development LLC, I should say. Steve Bocelli is here. Steve is the manager. And also Joe Bocelli is one of the principals. He is also in attendance. As I've mentioned, I am legal counsel for the entity. We also have Wendy Cohen of New Seasons, New Seasons Development. I'm sorry, Tony, Tony Hall. I apologize. Tony's here, not Wendy. Sorry, Tony. Tony is our forty B advisor and consultant and an expert in forty Bs. Rick Salvo is our site civil engineer from Engineering Alliance. And finally, Peter Sandors of Phoenix Architects is our architect on the development. We've also retained Vanessa Associates, who has performed a traffic study on the project. And we actually, I believe, are scheduled to be before the TAC. We'll get you a copy of that traffic report. But we will be going before the Traffic Advisory Committee on this, who obviously will report to you. As I've mentioned, this is a forty B application. It has been filed on behalf of Crescent Commons Development. Crescent Commons Development is a Massachusetts limited liability company with an address on two twenty-two Central Street in Saugus, Massachusetts. They have stipulated and agreed on a limitation on their return on total investment to the project pursuant to the requirements of Mass General Laws, Chapter forty B. And accordingly, they qualify as a limited dividend entity within the meaning of the statute. They're a related entity under common control and management with the owners of the property, Forty-four Crescent Street Realty Trust, Forty-six Crescent Street Realty Trust and Forty-eight Crescent Street Realty Trust, who are the collective owners of the property. And we have submitted to your board and to the state prior to you evidence of site control, which is required. On October fifteen, two thousand twenty, the Massachusetts Housing Financing Agency issued a project eligibility letter or site approval for this project. We have submitted to you a copy of that letter. And by obtaining the project eligibility letter or site approval, it satisfies the jurisdictional subsidy requirement of the statute. It allows us to apply and be before your board for this project. Funding will be provided through a Massachusetts bank to be determined. That is a member of the New England Fund as required by the regulations. As required by, uh, the regulations. Um, the New England Fund is a qualifying subsidy program designed to facilitate the development of affordable housing. Mass Housing has given required notices of the project in the issuance of the project eligibility letter to the town of Wakefield's Town Council. And also to the Massachusetts Department, um, I'm sorry, the Ma- yeah, the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development is required by law. I guess as far as a, a description of, of the existing property and what's being proposed. Um, we've submitted a number of maps and our team will go over some of these in detail in the presentation to the board. Showing the location of the property and the surrounding site. Um, and, um, also, uh, the property is located in the general residence zoning district. Which allows two family dwellings on eight thousand square foot lots of eighty feet of frontage. The property presently contains two family and or three family dwellings on each of the properties. And the total land area of the property is approximately twenty-five thousand one hundred thirteen square feet. The properties, uh, in the vicinity of the property contain a variety of residential. Industrial, commercial, and municipal uses. These include auto repair. Uh, as you're aware, the public safety, uh, building is there, assisted living. Residential multifamily, um, developments are also on the street. Um, restaurant and retail service establishments are, are right in the area, right in the downtown area. Property is easy access to all amenities of the downtown of Wakefield and, uh, easy access to, uh, public transportation. We have filed, uh, preliminary plans, engineering and architectural plans, uh, is, uh, required. Uh, which we will go through, our team will go through in a little bit of detail with you tonight. Uh, the existing public utility serving the property include public water, public sewer and electricity, and they're shown, uh, on the engineering plans. Um, the project will consist of one building with a total of fifty-six residential apartments. The proposed site conditions of the project are shown on the plans and Rick Salvo will go, go through that. And Peter Sandos will go through, uh, our four plans that are submitted, uh, as part of our application. The, um, stormwater management system, um, is in the process of being designed. We got some specifications as required by the DPW. And Rick Salvo be, will be working on that, uh, and submitting it. Uh, as you know, uh, we've requested zoning waivers pursuant to, uh, seven sixty CMR fifty-six point oh five two H. In pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty B and its regulations. Uh, the project is exempt from all provisions of the Wakefield zoning bylaws as well as all local non-zoning bylaws. So without limitation and subject to our reservation of what rights, we have submitted a very detailed list. Of the relief that would be required with our application. We also, as the project, uh, evolves through the process before your board. We reserve the right to update that and modify it, uh, as needed. Um, in addition to the requested waivers, the, as I've mentioned, the project is exempt from all local regulations, including any. Subdivision or planning board regulations, any Board of Health regulations, is complete exemption. Um, all filing requirements established by the Board of Appeals, uh, for this project, uh, have been met. The, um, as you're aware, Mass General Laws, Chapter forty B, uh, is, was created to, um. Create, uh, and promote affordable housing, which is much needed, uh, in the area. The Act is also known as the Anti-Snob Zoning Act. It provides in relevant part that all communities must have a minimum of ten percent of their housing stock. Dedicated to low, moderate income housing within the me- meaning of the statute and the regulations. Uh, as was stated in the, um, uh, approval letter. Um, according to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, forty B subsidized housing inventory through September fourteen, two thousand twenty in the town of Wakefield is at approximately seven point. Three, five percent. Uh, with the town being below the required ten percent threshold, there exists a legal presumption. That there is a regional housing need that outweighs any local concerns. In such cases, the municipality. With all due respect, and I think the board knows this, generally must approve the comprehensive permit project or approval conditions and modifications. As we all recognize will be part of the process. Uh, in order to deny a comprehensive permit application. They have to be, it has to be a finding that municipality have to prove that the project will impact municipal services in a manner that presents. Irreparable hazard or gravity that outweighs a regional housing name with, uh, housing need. Which is, you know, virtually under the case law, uh, somewhat impossible to do. Um, the applicant, my client agrees, um, and proposes that twenty-five percent of the total number of the units in the project, that being fourteen. Would be dedicated as affordable how, affordable units, uh, that they will be dispersed evenly throughout the project. They'd be made available on a lottery basis on terms acceptable to the town of Wakefield to qualified applicants. Um, and to the extent possible, we anticipate that there would be a preference given to, um, Wakefield residents. Um, so that is, is kind of a, a, a summary of, of where we are. As far as our application process and our site approval letter. Um, we look very forward to, um, to working with the board on this project is, you know, you're familiar with these types of projects. You just finished Tarrant Lane. Um, so I think you, you know, the board is well aware how these projects work and, um. And, and, and how they're derived and how they develop, uh, as they go through the process before you're aboard. Um, so with that said, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like, I think it will be helpful if I allow, uh. Rick Salvo from Engineering Alliance and Peter Sandos to give a general, uh, idea of the scope and idea of the project.
Thanks. Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Rick Salvo with Engineering Alliance, offset one ninety-four Central Street. And Saugus, uh, Mr. Tim, with your permission, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, as Attorney McGrail, uh, stated, these, uh, properties are known as, um. Forty-four, forty-six and forty-eight Crescent Street. They're also known as tax map seventeen lots, one seventy-one, one seventy-two and one seventy-five. Uh, to orientate yourself, Water Street's down the bottom of the, um, screen here, Sunny Noda's Restaurant. Crescent Street, um, heads up. This property, um, is a total of twenty-five, one hundred and thirteen thousand square feet. Um, and sits on the corner of Crescent Street, Crescent Hill Street. Um, as you can see, there's multifamily, uh, in the area. And as Attorney McGrail said, the public safety facility, um, is pretty nearby. Um, this particular piece of property. Contains about a hundred and seventy-eight feet of frontage, um, along, uh, Crescent Street and about. Eighty-seven feet of frontage on Crescent Hill Street. The topography of the site, um, really ranges all over the place. If we start at this corner up on Crescent Hill Street, it's about elevation one twenty-one. We come down to elevation one twelve on Crescent Hill Street. Then there's another grade change along Crescent Street that brings us down to about one oh five down in this corner. We come back up to one ten, one eleven in the back and then up to as high as one twenty-three. Um, in this back corner, as you could see, there's retaining walls, um, all over the place. Um, and this, uh, particular piece of property. Is, uh, primarily developed. The proposal, um, as Attorney McGrail noted, um, is a fifty-six unit. Uh, multifamily, uh, building that has two levels of parking. Um, under four stories of wood frame construction. Tried to set this building, spent a lot of time, um, with this building to make sure that we could set it into the existing topography. Um, as you saw, um, in the previous plan, um, which has quite a range on this property. Uh, the way that this property will be accessed is there'll be an entrance. Um, on the high, on the upper level of parking, that's at about elevation one fourteen. In this area here, pulling off of Crescent Hill Street, can access all this parking underneath the building. Come through and then access this parking, which is mostly under the building and partially out in, um, in an open parking lot. Um, on the upper level, um, there's, um. Forty parking spaces. If we come to the lower level, we can drive down Crescent Street down to about elevation, elevation one oh five, drive down this. To about elevation one oh two and you pull in underneath the upper level of parking. Over here, which is the low level parking, which has additional twenty-seven spaces, uh, for a total of about forty-seven, of sixty-seven spaces. Um, in the, in the development. Uh, the building is set off of, um, Crescent Street, anywhere between about eleven feet in this area. Um, to about twenty feet over on this corner, uh, for Crescent Hill Street. Um, it's about, um, nine to ten feet setback, but eleven foot setback, um, in, in the rear yard. Um, that's essentially the way the building, um, and access lays out. As far as drainage systems, we have a low point and a subsurface system underneath the driveway over here. We've got another system which captures the flow outside of the, um, driveway in this corner over here. And a roof infiltration system in the rear. Um, utility connections will be connected to the respective mains out front. Um, gas trap for the floor drains in the garage, um, domestic, uh, sewer line. Domestic water line, um, and fire line, um, in this here over here. And I know throughout the process, we're going to get really into detail on, on the grades. The utilities, the stormwater and a lot of coverage, but that's sort of a quick overview. Um, of how the building lays out and how it's accessed. Um, so I think with that, I'll turn it over to Peter, whoops, if I can control things here, uh, to go through the architectural.
So Rick, will you can, you'll continue to share and we'll just go down through the pages?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, that'd be great.
So thi- this was the unit count and the, and the mixes here, obviously.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you go through that, Rick, and a little bit, let Pete, let Peter talk about the unit count, what we got for bedroom in units.
So, um, the way, the way I'd like to do that is just if he, if you go to the first floor plan. We, we're, we're proposing the first three levels of the building to be, uh, consistent. And they consist of thirty, um, I'm sorry. The unit count is fifty-six. With that, we have thirty-one bedroom, nineteen-two bedroom, seven-three bedroom. That's, that's how the unit count breaks down. Look, here you're looking at, uh, the proposed first floor. Which is eight-one bedroom, five-two bedroom and two-three bedroom units. And that repeats back on the first floor, second floor and third floor. Um, pretty consistently. If you go to the fourth floor, Rick. You can see that, um, the rear section of the building, um, has been removed. So the square footage of the first fo- fourth floor is less. And, uh, that brings the unit count down in the fourth floor. So there we have a unit count of, um. Excuse me. Unit count of the fourth floor, six-one bedroom, four-two bedroom and one-three bedroom. The front elevation, I believe, is next. Yes, the front elevation, um, you can see, uh, what Rick was referring to in terms of the grade changing as it goes to the right, lower. And the lower parking coming up to the left on Crescent Hill higher. So that's the two levels, uh, of. A base with some type of masonry construction and then the, uh, four levels of, uh, living above. Trying to do a more residential, uh, style building with gable front, slope roofs. Clapboard and shingle, uh, siding at a hardy, hardy plank. Um, also Isaac trim, traditional, um, double hung windows. Um, showing balconies, uh, as well on the building. Uh, and this, this style of architecture repeats around the building. If you now scroll right to the other. Elevations, the rear, the sides, um, all begin to have the same type of architecture. And if you go to, I think the next will be our rendering. Uh, and this is our rendering here. We're showing, uh, how we meet, um, Crescent. Uh, how the entrance, um, has both a ramp and stairs to Crescent Street. All the parking is, uh, is held underneath, uh, the balconies at the building, the gables, couple of roof. Asphalt shingle, trying, trying to really give it a residential feel, even though it's a, it's a good sized, uh, building. Uh, that's it in an overview.
And I also think it's important to point out, um, that this is a rental project. So, um, which is, is, is great for the town of Wakefield for the subsidized housing inventory because, um. Although twenty-five percent are affordable, the town will get credit for all of these units. On the subsidized housing inventory where it's a mental project and not a, uh, for sale project. That, that's our, that's our, uh, basic presentation tonight, Mr. Chair. We're obviously happy to, uh. Answer any questions, uh, that the board might have.
Brian, how many parking spaces are there?
Rick, you wanna go to the site?
Sixty-seven.
Okay, so how many are you short?
There's some three bedrooms, so you gotta factor in two per.
From the zoning, um, from the zoning perspective, Amy, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Right there, yeah, just.
So there's eighty-seven required, so there's twenty spaces short.
Not nitpicking, but I think it'd be eighty-eight required, because it's been eighty-seven and a half if you include the. Forty-nine times one point five. Right?
And then there's the three bedrooms too.
Three bedrooms. But, I mean, either way, not, no.
So we're at least twenty short, okay. Um. Dave, I guess this might be through you. Um, when we did Tarrant Lane, we did a subcommittee to kind of. Work, Greg and I worked with, um, their team to go over a lot of stuff behind the scenes. I don't know if that's something that. We would want to maybe potentially do again, so we're not vetting this all out in hours on Zoom. Just a suggestion.
It's worth considering. I don't know if we're prepared to jump into that right tonight. Cause this is just the initial presentation. Once we got into the nuts and bolts of that other project, I think it was clear that. The nature of that site with multiple buildings and a lot of different things going on, that it really warranted that sort of subcommittee work. Um, to get us to the end, but, um, maybe we just need to digest this one and. And start getting into some of the details, um, in the next hearing and see where it goes. And if it seems like we're gonna. Have to get into some lengthy discussions, then I, I certainly would welcome that. Absolutely.
And, um, Brian, I have another question too, and I. Help me understand with the forty B stuff, is the open area that we can't look at that? Or can we?
Yeah, to, well, I mean, basically, the, you know, as I've mentioned, the, the zoning bylaw is, is not applicable. Um, I mean, you can use it as a guide, but, but, but it's not like we need a variance, uh, for it. Because it's, it's waived through the forty B process.
Okay. Can you keep that page up just for a minute?
Amy, it doesn't mean that we can't say this thing is way too big and way too dense.
Okay.
And not safe for the street.
Okay.
There, there'd be a couple of comments I'd like to make. One is the fact that you have no, that your twenty space is short on parking to me. Um, where are those cars going? They're going out on Crescent Street. They can't go on Crescent Street. Uh, you know, that's a safety issue. And one of the things we can turn down forty Bs are, are, is on safety. And on detrimental to the neighborhood. And, and so right there, that's a, that's a non-starter for me with the size. Two, you know, I appreciate that we're putting shingles on it, but that's like putting lipstick on a pig, in my opinion. Um, you know, this thing's huge for that area, huge. I mean, it almost dwarfs. The senior living or the public safety and, and other things. Um, I don't know how you can get to the point that it's, that it's not detrimental or. Appropriate and looking residential, because it's, it's just a big apartment building. Um, put some shingles on it, doesn't make it not a big apartment building. Um, so as we take a broad brush, uh, to me, not having the, the appropriate amount of parking for the building. Is, is a hazard, uh, and is, is a place to s- to be a starter. And two is just the size and the density. Um, even though you can waive setbacks and things like that, it doesn't, it doesn't allow you to just to go crazy and, and. This to me just is way too big, way too big. And I believe when you presented it, Brian, to the town council. Uh, they were also kind of taken back by the size. So, doesn't, I, I just think you gotta really think about that and how. How, how do? how, how the, where we go, but that's my broad brush first glance. On this one.
This, this, this doesn't scale with the surrounding neighborhood, basically, really. And in really just sort of says the hell with the rest of you, basically, I'm just going to sit here like a pig, basically. It, it needs to be broken down in scale and height and mass and like and the presentation as presented basically doesn't do it. So we got to get to a point where this thing can be scaled to the neighborhood in some way or other, basically. And I agree with you, Chip, on, on some of your points, basically, but it's going to take a while.
I, I haven't done the direct research tonight, but I also believe after the permitting of Tarrant Lane and the one by Greenwood and we're over two percent in a certain amount of time, which allows you to delay these things.
Yeah, yes and no, Brian, I'm sure you can speak to that, but they haven't pulled their permits yet, and I think that's, that, that is within a certain time period, Mike, right, within twelve months, we granted those a year ago, October and November, and that year has passed and they haven't pulled their permits, to my understanding, according to Gail and the building department. So that we've approved so two percent within twelve months kind of expired and when that year passed, so that part, that prong, I think we've lost. And we're not at ten percent, so we don't have that prong either. So I don't think it can be denied on, at the outset, based on those prongs. Brian, would you concur with that assessment? I assume you wouldn't be here. We researched, we researched that and we are forty B consultant, looked at that, we talked to the state, that's a correct correct statement, Mr. Chair. The Tarrant Lane project has not pulled the building permit since it was approved by the board. They have one year to do that. And once that happens, it comes off of the S H I and for all purposes of of getting credit for that project until they pull a building permit. And then it will go back on the S H I and help get the town back towards its ten percent. Which I think when you put this project in with that project, and as Mike Feely said, when you then put the Greenwood project in, when that pulls the project. You know, I think the town of Wakefield is going to get pretty close when, when some of these projects kind of finish up. But then what you're dealing with is the two thousand twenty one census that's coming up and in all my, you know, affordable housing seminars that I deal with say that the numbers are all going to change. Probably for the worst for most communities and it's going to get, you know, worse. And then there's also federal programs that they're talking about now, the supplement. Continually go on and on and on. But there's such a need for affordable housing that, you know, I don't think these types of projects are going to just disappear. But with that all said, you know, our goal is to work with your board. And, you know, so we, you know, we, we look at that as something that is a necessity and I desire. So, you know, we're here to work with you to try to make this fit and work the best of our ability within reason. And we look forward to trying to do that. Did you say you had a meeting scheduled with T A C yet or no? That's on your? I think I do. I, I, I believe it's, I believe it's the nineteenth. I can check. One second here. Let's see. Because we need to hear what they say again with the traffic flow and what our peer consultant will obviously get our well, they'll be looking at the Van Ness State Report, right, so we'll we'll get what T A C says, yeah. Let me just see here.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, I just would add, I agree with everything. If you put that site plan back up. I mean, this rendering doesn't show the houses directly that abut this proposal, but they dwarf those wood frames. Both that are running down Crescent towards Sunny Notos and that are on Crescent Hill directly on the other side. It's I don't know how someone can look at that and not have that jump off the page. You know, there's some multifamilies on Crescent Street, but the ones in that specific block aren't, I mean the differential in size there is staggering.
Yeah, that one house that's right in that little cove there.
Right, where you have the driveway coming out if you're going on the Sunny Noto side of the building. Yeah, I mean, look at the size differential there. In the one up on Crescent Hill, that's the first one on the right beyond this property. I mean, the differential in scale is.
Yeah, they just lost two sides of that property.
I, I think Jim hit the nail on the head. I mean, it's just, I don't want to beat the dead horse, he made the point the right way.
Okay, anyone else? Again, based on this initial presentation. Okay, we have received correspondence, Brian, as you probably are aware, from a few other town boards with their initial comments. Again, D P W Engineering has a few pages here with typical, somewhat, it appears to be typical comments, water, sewer, drainage so forth, which I'm sure your team will review and comment on. Fire department similarly. Typical comments and feedback around requirements, sprinklers and so forth, so concom not in their jurisdiction. So require further review with them, so. So board members, what are you feeling that we need to do from here? I mean, obviously, we're going to have to start with architecture amassing and we're going to have to get past that somehow. But we're not going to, we're not going to take three meetings, yeah, I'm sorry, Chip, I was going to finish. We're not going to take three meetings to do it. So how do we, do we start the subcommittee now then, or do we?
No, I think, I think they heard us, they heard town council. I mean, one thing they can come back with is a, is a massing. You know, to, to show us legitimately how much they're dwarfing these two houses or three houses on either side. And how this tucks into the neighborhood, into the community. They heard town council, they heard us. You know, I think they need to look at themselves in a mirror and say what's right for the town of Wakefield. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with forty B and setbacks and things like that being revised. But you can't just, can't just destroy the density issues and, and parking. You know, parking's huge in this area with Crescent Street and that being, you know, twenty under, that's ten units right there if you look at it quickly with a broad stroke. You know, and that doesn't include anything for guest parking, so. I, I get that they don't have to conform, but at some point, in order for it to be a safe and healthy environment and a safe project, they do need to to get in line a little bit.
And when they come back, we, we have to see context. You know, the one rendering, it just shows the building by itself, isn't helpful. I mean, you want to see the architecture, you want to see it, but I'd like to see what it looks like next to the buildings next door. Now, some, you know, on that site plan, you know, why would you have your parking come out right into that house on the right hand side there? Like zero consideration given for that a butter. So there's some basic things here that I think.
Yeah, and I would even add, oh, sorry, Tom, I don't know if I.
No, no, go right ahead.
I would even add too, I mean, even beyond just coming back next time with with massing, I mean, in rewatching the town council meeting today, that was, you know, six, seven months ago now. Are the same things Brian is saying now, hey, we want to work with the town, that's what we're here for. There's not one bit of change taking into any account what town council told you. So, I mean, I would like to see at the next meeting, you know, some good faith showing and actually coming back with suggested changes rather than just, here's why we want what we gave you.
They, they, they should do a three D massing model for the neighborhood, basically, which includes this building in it. So it even, I mean, you could have it so that you can turn three buildings into being taken down on or off, basically, so you can see it before and afterwards, but to get the neighborhood in there, across the street, around the block, basically, massing model. It doesn't have to be an architectural model, just has to be basically a massing model that shows the blocks of buildings that are there. Like I've done a number of times, basically, to show the rest of the board members of other projects, basically. Enough information so you get a sense as to what this is going to look like in context, right?
My, my point, Jim, though, is what they're hearing is, you're saying to come back with a model of this building.
No.
Hearing is, this building isn't going to do it.
I, I would agree with you, and I would also say that we want not just a redesign of this to, to be more conciliatory to the neighborhood. But part of that needs to be the rest of the neighborhood as well. So, you know, so go back, and I don't know that they can do that in time enough, basically, so I'd give them time to you know, another, another month or so, it's something like to come back after hearing all this. And I'm sure that the, the public's going to come down on this as well, so they need to hear where we're coming from. And, and some contextual nature, basically, for this building. And part of it is, is the architecture and the massing of the architecture and how the architecture is broken down. It's just a big frigging box, no real character to it.
No offense, Peter. Okay, anyone else? Okay. So I will open up the public testimony again and limit the discussion and request, and I will try to limit the discussion to what's been presented tonight initially. We're obviously going to continue this and get into all the aspects of this project in more detail, but in terms of general presentation, if you have a comment or question at this time, please raise your hands in the Zoom meeting.
Angelo.
Good evening, board. Sorry, we're trying to cut this both in, in view here.
No worries, if you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
Angelo Salamone Rebecca Sweat at forty Crescent, the property just to the north on this drawing.
We're the little tiny blue house in the corner of the picture.
Okay.
If you look on the rendering, so just a, a couple of points of clarity here, comparing the landscaping plan to the rendering, which I believe is the next slide. Not clear to us what the height differential is. If that's even intended to be clear at this point, currently our, our south facing wall where we're sitting now. Three and a half, four months out of the year, the arc of daylight just clears the existing structures, adding another thirty feet or so would put us in the dark for most of the day. So we would like to see clarification on the height, additionally comparing the landscaping plan to the rendering. We noticed a, a number of trees in the rendering in the rear of the building that are greater in height than the proposed building, but I don't see room for those on the existing plan, nor do they currently exist on the property in question or the neighboring properties to the east. Don't know how accurate that's intended to be, but certainly a reduction in available tree coverage now versus the landscaping plan versus what's presented in the rendering.
Okay. Sure, we would get that in more detail in a future hearing, but what is the, just for the sake of the comment. Brian or Peter perhaps, what's the proposed height of the building as presented? It's four stories, the underground parking, four stories. With the pitch roof. I think, I think we have the height shown on the schedule. Rick, can you blow up the plan?
It's there in the lower table, I just can't read it, it's too small.
You're going to blow it up.
Thank you, same here, we can't read it at this resolution.
Maximum height looks like was about sixty five feet.
Sixty five.
Very dramatic increase compared to existing sightline.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Katie Nastow.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hopefully you can see me too. Hi, my name is Katie Nasto. I live at nine Crescent Hill. I'm a property owner at one of the residential single family homes on Crescent Hill. One of the other buildings that's totally dwarfed by what's been proposed. I'm a mom to two young children and I've got serious concerns about the impact of traffics, traffic, safety and parking, some of the things that have already come up in the conversation. I know that you've mentioned the deficit of the twenty spaces and I'm, I'm very concerned where would these people and where would their guests park? We do not have enough parking in our neighborhood. I'm concerned that folks will park on the wrong side of our street, which is a dead end. Crescent Hill is a dead end. Parking on the wrong side of this street limits access of emergency services to our homes, especially those that are located at the, at the far end of Crescent Hill. I really feel strongly that the lot size is not big enough for a property of this size. This, as you've already mentioned, this is too big, way too dense and just not safe for our neighborhood. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Sue Mitchell.
Actually, Mark Mitchell. I'm at fourteen Crescent Hill. I just want to, you know, echo what we've been hearing, what we've heard at the town council meeting, what we're hearing from hearing here today is, is the magnitude of this proposed project is, is just too huge. Twenty five thousand square foot lot to put, you know, the fifty four apartment units, it's just too much. That without a doubt will affect traffic, which we're sure you'll get into, parking. As Katie just said, the, you know, where I live at the end of the dead end street here. You know, we had an incident here last weekend, fire trucks barely get down here and we're proposing to, you know, be twenty, twenty parking spaces short and that's not going to cut it. The other thing that I have a concern with that I've looked at is the entrance to the building being on Crescent Hill. It's right at the intersection of Crescent Hill and Crescent Street, which will, you know, be bringing in how many cars a day in and out of that garage at that little small spot where, you know, an eight house dead end street. So, you know, I'm sure you'll all get into it. I'm sure this is going to be a process that we'll all be able to take, you know, take part in and we will. But just wanted to echo what we've been hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Wade Family. Is that someone's name or a whole family?
Yeah, hi there, this is Michael Wade. And I am the owner and occupant of five Crescent Hill, which is right next door to Angelo and directly across from this proposed development, and thank you for allowing me to speak in this forum. I share a lot of the concerns that were raised specifically around public safety and parking and traffic. I understand there's going to be a traffic assessment. I'm not going to rehash what's already been said about, about the traffic, but from, from, from the parking and public safety perspective, I, I think what I heard a lot earlier was this assumption that these extra cars, not only for the occupants and these extra twenty spots, but also all of the guest parking, which has barely been discussed, is going to end up on Crescent Street, when in fact historically, what we found in this neighborhood is that that ends up coming onto Crescent Hill. And like Katie said, this is a small, quiet residential dead end street and just thinking about emergency services coming into these homes need arises with all this extra parking, particularly during peak traffic times, like in the morning during commute or, or in the evening. What, what, what is it like, what, what's it going to be like for a fire truck or an ambulance trying to get into these residential homes when the entire street is filled up with all this overflow parking, which, which is already an issue for us? I mean, when we have any social engagements around here, guests have to park a street over because this street fills up. So I just want to echo a lot of the concerns that were already raised and thank the board for its time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wade. Anyone else? Just looking down the list for now, again, there'll be other opportunities. All right, seeing no other hands, we'll close with the public testimony for the evening. Okay, so, uh, Brian, I think you've got the feedback.
I I just have to add that, you know, when you look at the site approval letter, and I and I just wanted to point this out because there's been a discussion, you know. Density, you know, the the state site approval letter from Mass Housing references, it talks about density. On this site, and it says, the developer intends to build fifty-six units on approximately twenty-five thousand one hundred thirteen thirteen square feet of land. All of which are buildable, and that's one of the things that they look at, there's no like wetlands here, there's zero wetlands. So it's all upland and good area, then they go on, the resulting density is ninety-eight units per buildable acre, which is acceptable. Given the proposed housing type and the project's location with an existing mixed-use and transit-oriented neighborhood. So, you know, they factor that in when they look at the density and the parking, the fact that it's walkable to transit. And, you know, so those things are factored in, you know, I just have to point that out that, you know, we didn't just come up with a with a unit count, this is, this is all kind of vetted. You know, through through the state process.
Mr. Sheriff, just one response to that, too, is that same letter, Brian, that you referenced. Does also say, the applicant should be paid prepared to address municipal concerns relative to the massing height. And density of the proposed building. Does also say the applicant should be prepared to respond to municipal concerns relative to potential off-site park. Uh, traffic impact, so it's not that that letter is necessarily a. Get out of jail free card on this, it says right in that letter that you should be prepared to to address concerns of. The municipality who specifically would be the people who surround them.
Sure, but but, you know, that's that's not to say that there's defects in those either, Greg, that that that's to say that there's a traffic study that's been done. And that will go before the traffic advisory committee, so addressing concerns doesn't mean change things. It means, you know, look at how they work and how they vet, which I said that we're willing to do.
Understood, but more, you basically presented that letter as a get out of jail free card.
No, I I didn't, I didn't, but but I've heard tonight that the the density is ridiculous, it's, you know, it's in those types of comments and and, you know. It it in the letter, it it didn't say it was ridiculous, it said that that type of development is actually appropriate from a density perspective. Considering where it is and where it's located, and it did say that these concerns that have to be addressed and looked at. And and we're certainly gonna do that, I said that, so we will. But but we've heard a lot of comments that, you know, it's way too big, way too dense, and and, you know, I just think that this. This, you know, the state actually didn't say that, they they said the opposite.
But Brian, I appreciate that, however, do they actually look at the actual site? Or do they look at common sites, common size? Could be in Wakefield or could be in Dorchester.
Well, I, they look at this site, they look at this site on how, where it is, where it's located, what transit's available, they look at this site specifically when they address that, when they do these letters. They look at all the information related to this site.
But what they don't do is talk to the people.
I'm sorry, Greg, I didn't hear you.
But what they don't do is talk to the people who live there, who have an understanding. Of their health and safety concerns. Based on density and parking.
And that's where we come in.
And that's a fact, they they don't do that, I'm not. You know. That's that's where I was going earlier, so that just because they, and I know they do a site visit, I've been involved in these before. But what they don't do is knock on doors or hold meetings like this to truly understand the impacts of the area.
Well, I mean, I think we discussed it, I think their main concern is affordable housing, right? I mean, that's that's what that's what drives them and and in the need for. Um, and that's why they, you know, the statute says that unless it's, you know, there's there's absolutely irreparable. Um, safety issues that that the need for affordable housing outweighs the local concerns in zoning, that's the way, that's the way the statute operates. So, you know, with that with that said, and I said it before, and and I'm gonna say it again, our our goal is to is to work with the board. Um, and we hear, we hear you loud and clear, um, I think the board knows that, um. Um, you know, we will work with you and and try to make this a good project that that everybody can, you know, can can be. Can be acceptable to everybody and 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 it will work, that will be, that's our goal.
So how long do you think you need to start working towards that goal?
I think what I would respectfully request is I is I would would request a subcommittee, because one thing I don't wanna do is in in. And if the board puts yourself in our position, I don't wanna be throwing arrows into the dock. You know, I I I don't wanna like, you know, go make modifications to a plan or make changes and then come back and say, oh, that's still not good enough. Because as you know, when you start doing modifications to stuff like this, it becomes very costly to do that. So, you know, so so, you know, we've heard from you that, you know, you don't like it. And, you know, and we we heard that loud and clear, well, give us some people to work with that we can all try to find something that that works. Versus us just guessing what might work.
Okay, board members.
They come back with next time and then do a committee at that point.
Or do a committee to help them get to the next point. I I can't do it, I'm not working from home, I'm out and about and. I don't have the time, I'm also on the PBC, so. Between the public safety and the high school, I'm pretty tapped out. I think Greg and Amy did a great job on Tarrant Lane.
I'm with Chip, I don't think with a a third on the way.
Oh, jeez, I forgot about that, Greg, I think you're tapped out more than me. Is there anybody on the board that's retired?
Oh, isn't that cute?
Just checking, just checking.
Yeah, okay, okay, I'll volunteer.
Jim, unfortunately, it all falls back to you, because we can, we can guess and think what you're gonna like and. Fail miserably and then you have to correct it anyway, you might as well be involved from the beginning.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a compliment, kinda.
I'm working, I'm working on a church now.
Well, that's good, too.
God will look down on you well with this as well.
Oh, yeah, send money, please.
You'll get time off.
How's your time these days with your foot?
Fine, I'm I'm willing to to help out.
All right, thank you, Amy, and can we start if it if if it turns out the time commitment, you know, something comes up and just let us know, right?
Yeah.
But why don't we start between now and the next meeting, if you guys can arrange offline. Get the team together and at least get that conversation going.
And I think if you can get down to fifteen units, you'll be fine with me.
Sounds perfect.
Right.
Hi, Brian, um, the letter from, um, I assume it's from Mass, uh, DHCD, maybe?
Uh, Mass Housing, like.
One of the, one of the ways, um, a town can. Can get a little more leverage on this, and I'm I'm, you're not gonna say, yeah, this is great, but it, the town's never done a study of the percentage of land. Residential land covered by existing affordable housing to date. As far as I know. And that a town can reject these things if more than one point five percent. Of the total residential land area is covered by. Affordable housing, I think affordable housing is great. Um, I just wanna know that the town is using any. Any information that it has, I don't, I don't know that the town's ever done that study, I know Stonem did it and was able to. Have these blocked. Is there anything in that letter, I I don't have the letter in front of me that relates to that?
No.
And to date, I, as far as I know, the town's never done that study, I don't know why.
I can reach out to, I can reach out to our new. Business and economic developer, um, director, Erin Kokinda, um, I know she's been talking to Steve about getting the updated S H I numbers and. Making sure we're in sync in the latest, uh. Um, census and all that stuff, but I haven't seen that either, like, um. It is not, it is another prong, but I've never seen it, even when Paul Revis was here and he was helping to maintain these statistics for us and reporting on them. To the state.
I don't know, there's like a nonprofit that does it, um, that towns hire, but.
Oh, Paul Paul did it, well, he's he he's looked into all of this stuff, because that was all, when he, when Paul. When Paul Revis did the housing production plan, there was a lot of information that he had to submit, so I I know that it's not. What you're talking about is not a small endeavor.
No, I know.
And it, and I I don't think you're even gonna end up being close to it, to be honest with you, because I know other towns that have looked at that, it's not even close.
Yeah, and quite honestly, maybe I shouldn't say this, towns never win that battle when it goes to court either.
I know Stonem did, though.
Stonem had the, um, Stonem had, I think it was the New England Regional Hospital.
Yep.
That was that that just changed, that was like a huge gigantic amount of land, uh, area up on Spot Pond and that and that put them over. I think at the end of the day, I'm I'm really confident, um, that that this is gonna take shape, like. That will be, it will be something that will get the town's affordable unit mix up, and it's gonna be something that I think. Will work, I, you know, I I really believe so, I think there's a good, we have a good team here, we have a very good architect, Peter Sandulus. Excellent engineering firm, and, you know, I've said it, I did say it to the town council, I'm saying it again to this board, our desire is to work with you. Um, and I think you'll be surprised how how much we're gonna work with you on this to make it, to make it fit properly and make it work. I really believe that.
Okay, you're on the record.
We're gonna, we're gonna work hard to try to do that, that's it, that's our goal, so.
All right, do you wanna set the continuance for two weeks, or do you wanna?
I think my client would like to say something, Dave.
In my, Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Bocelli, can you hear me? Yes, we can. Uh, I just wanted to correct one thing, Brian, on the, uh, I don't want those people that think that we have a sixty-five foot building next to them, it's actually sixty-five on the right side. And I believe forty-five on Crescent Hill. Just that they'll be going to sleep tonight thinking there's a tower next to them. Thanks, Joe. For that, I'm sure we'll see it when we see some three D massings and get a better sense for that for the surrounding areas, but thank you. Anyone else before we?
Um, if just if to, um, if they're gonna come back in two weeks, I'm gonna be out of the country leaving Monday, so I'm not gonna. I'll be back for the meeting, but I'm not gonna be around to, um. To meet at subcommittee, so I don't know if that's something that they're trying to do now or wait until after, I mean, Jim can always go and then fill me in, but I won't be here.
Well, let me ask you this, I mean, through Peter and Rick, I mean, you know, some of the stuff that we've gotta, we've gotta do here, is two weeks even enough?
No.
No.
No. Oh, I mean, you know.
Think about it, Peter.
Alone will take a fair amount of time, right?
Yeah, if we push this to two weeks, we're gonna waste the board's time, we're gonna waste the neighbors' time, we're gonna waste the public's time, it's it's not gonna be a lot of. Of movement on this in two weeks, I don't think.
I I I think we need to step way back, I think we need to build a massing model, basically. For the area, and then I think we need to start to settle in as to how this building might mass out within the site. And within the constraints that that exist, basically, to look at some sort of shape and form. I think we've jumped too far ahead on this at this point with just even the character of it. We need to look at how how to build a mass in here that works in the area of the neighborhood. And with the surrounding buildings that are in this area, basically. And from that, basically, develop something, so to me, it's gonna take, you know, all of. All of a month, basically, to build that and come up with some sort of rough idea as to how this might fit into the neighbor neighborhood. And it's probably several blocks, basically, that could put into this box. And, you know, without getting into the overall character of this, just in the sense of how this would block out within the space. So there's more, there's much more work here to do to be successful, quite frankly. Anything you throw out there at this point in a week, two weeks, three weeks, just not gonna be enough.
Okay, point taken, are we gonna continue to March tenth, then? And try to make something happen before then?
Peter, is that more realistic?
I believe so.
Okay. I mean, why don't we set that, and if you need more time, we can continue then, but at least we're, we're giving yourselves some more time to work through some things. And not being, being more realistic than just two weeks from now, which doesn't seem feasible, so. Three ten.
I move that we, uh, continue this to March tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Discussion. All favoritism. Chip?
Yes.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And we'll, uh, we'll look for some good updates in the four weeks. Thanks, Brian, thanks, team.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for the new hearings. We have another matter. Brian, is this yours? Seventeen thirty-nine, forty and forty-one at sixty-nine Foundry Street, Melanson Development Group, uh, discuss occupancy.
Yep. So, uh, you ready, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, so this is the, this is the project at sixty-nine Foundry Street, which is nearing, uh, completion, and I say nearing cautiously. It's it's it's, I'd say it's probably Jim eighty-five, ninety percent, maybe, is that about right?
Well, the, yeah.
Yes or no, Jim, yes or no?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So, uh, basically, they're at the point now with the weather conditions that they're, they're looking to stack, um, they're getting close to wanting to sell units. Um, and, um, so we are, we need to talk to the board about, um, uh, some surety. Um, to to hold back for some completion items. Um, they are going to wanna get a certificate of, uh, occupancies for their common area and then individual units as the units are completed. All of the units in the building are substantially completed, meaning that all the plastering i- is done, the only thing that needs to be done in most of the units. Is installing the kitchen counters and, um, some bathroom fixtures, because they, but the buyers choose what they want. Uh, for different fixtures. Um, so, um, so basically, we've commenced discussions with, uh, the building inspector, Ben de Cristoforo, about what he would require. Uh, to give us the occupancy permits for the common area and then start issuing COs for individual units as we go along. And obviously, we, you know, the board has a part of that, because the landscaping is not completed. Uh, there's there's some items on the outside of the building that are not completed. Um, so we had a site walk with the board liaisons, Amy and Jim, on Tuesday morning, we spent quite a time, a bit of time there. We walked around the building and we we walked through the entire building every floor. Um, so that your board members could get an idea of where it stood. And so based on that, the, my client is putting together a itemized list with estimates of what needs to be done. Uh, for your consideration, um, that we would probably bring to your next meeting and 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 going to propose that. A certain number of certificate of occupancies would be held back as surety. Um, for that list of work, um, to allow the project to be released to Ben to start issuing COs. So closings can happen, because people.
I I might point out that those units will not be incomplete units, but be fully complete units. Even if they aren't sold, they'll determine what the finishes are and and finish them off. So we're not sitting with, uh, something that doesn't have value, basically, the to the board to control this. And the building inspector basically is gonna give a, give a temporary CO to the public corridors, and then we'll issue COs. As they sell groups of units basically out, but in the end, basically, what they wanna do is. Is, um, basically use a group of units, basically, for surety, to make sure the outside work's done. They got three weeks of outside work, depending on whether to complete out, complete up. Um, that they can complete, and they expect to be done sometime in May, uh, basically at this point.
So, processually, we need to see that list, and we would then have to, normally on these projects, we would, um, send a letter to the building department stating. The conditions of the board have been met or not, or there's a punch list and we're, you know, we're satisfied pending the completion of X, Y and Z. So I think we need to see that list and just go through it, right? So I think we need to see that list and just go through it, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, landscaping, landscaping is typical. We've dealt with that because we're in winter now, but it's, I think it's getting an understanding of the other items and.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's kind of the update. So we'll be back. I mean, Jim or Amy, do you have anything to add? I mean, I think, I think the, the building looks great. Don't you guys agree? I mean, that, you know.
It's beautiful.
Beautiful inside.
They've done a great job.
Yeah, Amy's asking what they cost. Basically, I think she was thinking about moving in.
Some nice units in there.
Yeah, some great units. Really nice views, beautiful.
Okay, so we'll see in two weeks and.
I think so. Okay. Jim, did I miss anything or is that?
Yeah, no, I think it came on topic.
Okay.
We'll get into the details next week. We'll go through the list in two weeks and there'll probably be a little more discussion, but I think that's what we needed tonight, right, Brian?
That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, is Mike still here? We might have missed him. Though Mike McCarthy had hung on and maybe should have jumped to him while he was still here. Cause we've been, in the background, we've been, um, requesting updates on twenty-seven and thirty-seven Water Street. Board members, remember, we did a site visit um, in, I think it was either late, it was mid-August, I believe, um, to go through landscaping and parking and some updates, the plans. And I think we've seen an updated landscaping plan, um, somebody has, but we have not to date seen an updated parking plan as built, uh, let me finish, that has been signed by the fire chief.
Dave, guess who called me today? Mister.
Yeah, I, I was gonna let Gail speak, but.
Well, if Gail gets some other information, but I had probably a half an hour conversation with him.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just texted Mike. He's gonna hop back on.
Oh, okay. Um, so anyway, we've been trying to close this one down as board members would recall. And, um, it's just taken way longer than anyone would have thought to just get these updated plans.
Well, unfortunately, I think that we gave him an out by giving him partial occupancy.
Only one building.
He, but he's getting rent.
Yeah, well, like, like two units. He is, he has got supposedly, I haven't seen this, but he tells me he has the plans. He's taken with the fire department basically to have the chief look at them and sign them off. That's what he's told me. He's.
One sec, one sec. Michael's rejoining here. He's connecting his audio. We'll give him a chance to participate. Hi Mike, welcome back. Sorry, I didn't, I meant to get to you earlier. I didn't realize you were dropping, but we were under other matters and wanted to talk about twenty-seven and thirty-seven Water Street.
Yeah, sure.
Um, and so I just was briefing the board like, you know, we've been trying to get updates here and it sounds like Jim and perhaps Gail have updates, um, as well. Um, but do you wanna give your?
Yes.
Um, update first and then we can add to it if we need to. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So, um, I did get a, um, a, an as-built from Paul Finocchio, um, later in the week last week. Um, I wanted to add a few details. I think there was some dimensions missing from it such as the parking spaces. So I didn't wanna circulate it, um, until those changes were made. I did talk to Paul about that and he's gonna make those changes. So that'll be ready soon. In addition, uh, the fire department was out there today, um, and it sounds like, you know, and I asked, um, the client to get a letter to this effect that the fire department is okay with the parking layout, um, the way it's shown on, uh, Paul Finocchio's plan, which isn't truly then an as-built. It, it, actually it is. It shows a difference in the island. I take that back. Uh, but i- i- it, all I have on that is a conversation with the client, um, very recently, but it sounds like we will have a letter from the fire department approving the layout. You know, I'll wait till I see the letter, but.
Mike, yeah, with normal set of plans, don't the, don't the plans get signed by the fire department? So, yeah. Usually get a set of plans and then they sign, literally sign off on it, right?
When you submit for a building permit, you submit three sets of plans, one of which goes to the fire department and they stamp and sign it, but what I wanted, and I think what the board wants, before we get to that stage where we're ready to submit for a building permit, is an indication from the fire department that they're, that they're good with the layout of the park. And I think Chip, that fire department sign off, I think, usually relates to the building itself, but I've asked for a separate letter, uh, from the fire department, uh, relating to the parking and specifically, I think it was the issue of access by the, um, by the, what the omelet.
Yeah. Yeah, there was some proposed parking and just.
That's what I'm referring.
Their access, their access this night mainly and.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to. So I wanted to get that by separate letter.
Yep. And then landscaping, did we close on that?
No, we haven't closed on it. No. Um, the landscaping, a lot of it has been planted. I was in contact with, uh, Chip a while back on that. And I, you know, subject to review and then specifically your review and Chip's review, um, you know, I think we're in good shape on that, but, uh, but that's gonna be shown on a plan too.
Well, Chip and I were out there in November after town meeting. I think it was November, whenever. We went over there basically on our little tour and there was some planting in. Not all the planting is in. The sizing's not quite right. Planting in the front, some of it had been either removed, dead or whatever, and we could not find irrigation system uh, in this. So I told Frank, I, Frank called me today. We had a half an hour conversation, uh, this afternoon. I told him that we looked at this and we're not ready to sign off on planting until the season comes around again at this point.
Sure.
So, you know, he understand, he understands that. He's had some difficulty basically finish off of the units, particularly on appliances. I guess there's a real, real problem with getting appliances these days. So he's, uh, he's been under the, you know, he was gonna have all GE units. You can't buy a GE unit these days, I guess. So he's had issues there at the same time. Um, so he suspects that he anticipates or plans on like March or something like that. Uh, end of March or something like that, that he'll be looking for his, um, CFO.
But for the purposes of this board, it was a final landscape plan signed off and a final parking plan signed off by the fire chief. And if we got those two things and we were satisfied, now if it's winter and none of the planting's been done, we could do something with surety and a bond or whatever and money held set aside or whatever, but we just need those two things closed, I think, for us to render a letter to the building inspector that says they've met the conditions of this board. Whatever that might still be outstanding for Bill, the COO is up to the building inspector, right? But at least for this board.
There is one matter for the board basically is that the DPW hasn't allowed him to put the curb cut in, um, at this point. He tried, he tried to sort of schedule it with warmer weather and the like, but, um, DPW, cause it was still winter, basically said he couldn't put the curb cut in. So he's held back on a curb cut.
That's correct. The, uh, that was around Thanksgiving and he was told that there was a moratorium on, on doing that type of work. So, um, that's understood as well.
Like till the spring? Like for the winter, it's a moratorium?
I- i- it's a town, it's a DPW moratorium. I, I don't know what the, you know, what the start date will be, but I'll find out. But I know he stopped other projects, uh, town engineers stopped, stopped other, um, similar efforts, not just for him, but also for the, and private people for the town. So, um, but that's understood.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Anything else?
Not for me. Maybe Gail has some inside track.
Well, the fire department got called out there today for something and, um, Tom Purcell noticed that people are, have moved in uh, to the apartments. So we notified, he knows there's no occupancy. So we notified Ben right away. So tomorrow Ben's gonna send a cease and desist and call town council to see how to proceed.
That's something that I'm not, other than having heard it, um, this afternoon, um, was not familiar with. So I'll have to, um, you know, familiarize myself with that.
Yeah.
So I don't have any detail comment. I don't have, I don't have, I don't have a, you know, reply on that.
Okay, so the adventure of twenty-seven and thirty-seven continues.
Indeed. If, if the client does say he thinks he'll, you know, the, the property will be in, other than the landscape, you know, what we need to supply you and other than the sidewalk, which will need to be bonded or surety, um, he thinks the construction end will be done in a couple of weeks, you know, in terms of being ready for occupancy, but, but that's just, you know, not something I can speak, um, confidently to right now.
Yeah, you shouldn't.
I wouldn't talk to him anymore yourself. Uh, Ben's not even gonna talk, uh, to him. He's been calling Ben off the hook. He only wants to talk through his attorney.
More work for me. What, you know, that's all I can say.
Hopefully, hopefully it doesn't end up with our turn attorney, but we'll see.
Okay, no, no, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I just, I appreciate you jumping back on, Mike, and, uh, it was, I, I listed this under other matters just so we could get an update. All right. Well, thank you.
Very good. All right. Have a good night. Thanks.
You too. Thank you. All right. Anything else on other matters or clerk of board comments? Any other updates?
Can we move the, can we approve the minutes?
We sure can.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the January twenty-seventh minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, they were perfectly written.
And you've read them all, right, Chip?
Absolutely.
All approved. Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All right, um, before anyone, um, makes another motion, um, Chip? Are you going to re-up before the deadline in two days?
The deadline is Friday. We'll see.
Oh, God. They, they're not open on Friday.
No.
Friday mornings. I'll put it in tomorrow. I've been a little busy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've all been a little busy.
No, you haven't. You've been sitting in your chair.
All right.
Yeah.
Oh, no, gosh.
Meeting's still going on. I just wanna make sure that the four members whose terms are expiring.
You are, the other three did it, right?
I, the other three have confirmed they've done it. So. Yep.
Mine will be done tomorrow.
Can someone do chips, please?
That would be really helpful.
Your resume just, it just.
Well, she has seventeen copies of my resumes from the last seventeen times I've done it.
Just change the date and send it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that means I had to have saved it.
Oh, crap.
All right. Well, I just wanna make. I have requested that, um, that we be sent any new applicants just for the board's consideration in case, uh, and, and we wanna make any recommendations to the town council before they vote. So I've asked, I have not heard. Again, the deadline is Friday, so I don't know if anyone else has submitted an application. We'll see. Um,
Are we gonna have to go to the meeting again, Dave?
Probably.
All right.
Um, I probably will, um, just because I think it's, it's a good.
Is that the meeting? Oh, that's not until April though, right?
It won't be till April. Yeah. Um, probably the first or second meeting. I think it's typically earlier to mid-April that they try to do it. Um, but I'd, I'd be curious to see if anyone else, um, submits an application. There's a lot of openings. If you've seen the town announcements.
Yeah.
A lot of boards have a lot of openings. Um, I'm sure there's some every year, but it just seems like there's more.
I mean, I, so I, to that note, I have a question. I mean, if everybody re-applys, we don't have any opening.
No, you do.
You still have to get appointed.
You still have to get reappointed. So somebody could reappoint somebody.
Four openings. If they don't want any, if four other people come on, they can just say, we want these four new people.
Yeah, you, you can make a pain in the ass out of yourself and get kicked off the board.
I kinda try every year.
There aren't any limits on alternates.
No.
No, we're maxed out, but, um, anyway, we'll see if anyone else does. If, if others do, then we'll, it'll be interesting to see.
May the odds be ever in your favor.
May the odds be ever in your favor. If nobody else does, then I.
Tell him that. Don't tell him that. He's gotta get the damn thing in.
I know. And then we have to write a letter saying we support him.
That might be the toughest thing for anybody to do.
Be hard for me, particularly what he did to me tonight.
All right. With that, I just wanted to, uh, make sure we're all on board with that. All right.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Word.
Any discussion? All right, Chip?
I will, uh, group text you all when I send it in tomorrow.
Yeah, we want.
Everybody can sleep tomorrow night.
Do you approve of the motion, Chip?
I approve the motion.
Amy?
Yeah, I second it. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, Greg?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Did Chip just say word?
We are adjourned.
I hope so.
And it is getting pretty late, so, uh, this meeting is, uh, adjourned and ended. Thank you again for your time tonight, board members. We'll talk to you soon.
Greg, Greg, get your beauty sleep, will you please?